Okay Cassandra. And John Howland joins us, great. Okay. So I'm calling the zoning Board of Appeals Town of Cohasset meeting on Tuesday, June 7th, 2022. I'm calling it to order. It's now seven oh one or so PM. We, once again, are in a virtual meeting via Zoom. And we will proceed ahead. I would, for the listening audience, I would just remind you that, you know, we do have a raised hand feature. You're encouraged to speak when the time comes and as long as we can sort of keep it focused on the relief being sought, that would be much appreciated. So we'll treat everybody in a manner, in a nice civilized manner. So the first item of regular business is a comprehensive permit, also known as a friendly 40B filed by the South Shore Habitat for Humanity to construct two affordable homes, really of a duplex nature at 808 and 810 Jerusalem Road. The filing was for 808, but actually there were two different addresses contiguous. So is anybody here? Oh, I see there is a Noreen, Noreen Brown is here. Hey Mike, Mike Dickey's joined us.
Hey Woody, hey everybody.
So we've just opened up. The first hearing is 808, 810 Jerusalem Road and Noreen is here. Noreen, we do, do you have more to add? I do have a question for you, but go ahead.
Um, so yes, I followed up with John after our last meeting and he made arrangements with the police department to come by and take a look at the site and share any comments. And it's my understanding from John's conversation that there are no concerns at this time from the police department.
In terms of speeding on Hall Street, I guess was the issue? Is that correct?
John?
Oh, yes. I spoke with both, well, three people, Brian Joyce, Chief Jockery and the Police Chief, and they all voiced no concerns with the, with the project as far as the driveway location and the existing. Police Chief did mention that yes, he might be able to, you know, put a traffic detail out there to, just to monitor the speed. But that, then again, the project itself, he had no questions or concerns with.
Okay. And Noreen, I had one or a couple of questions for you, but the primary one, I missed it at our last hearing. The application was filed by the South Shore Habitat for Humanities, your group, but the landowner is a Cohasset Affordable Housing Trust. They should at the very least be co applicants.
Okay.
Is there a reason why they aren't applicants or?
Um, that's a very good question. We haven't done that in the past before, but I'm sure I could get them added if that's a concern. At some point, we will be, before we really start construction, we will be taking title to the project. So.
Oh, you mean from, from the Affordable Trust?
Yes, we typically don't take title until all the permitting is approved because, you know, if we can't build, we don't want the land. And if we can't build, you don't want to give it to us. So, but yes, when any construction starts, we will be just, typically, we are the sole owner of the property.
Okay, let me just ask Joel very quickly. This is strictly procedural, obviously, and I can write it up as I drafted. As either we have two co applicants or we have a single applicant, even though they don't own the land at present. Is it, is it a big deal one way or another?
No, in my opinion, it's not, you know, whichever way it feels best for the board and for the applicant.
Okay. How does the board feel? I mean, just to go forward with the way the application was filed? Any points of view? Dave doesn't care.
I, I gotta say, Woody, I'm not
You're muted, Mike.
Oh, I, I thought I'd come off. I said, I'm not going to lose sleep over this.
Yeah, I'm not either. I would propose that while my draft lists, lists both parties, I propose to go back to the way the application was filed and accepted, which is the South Shore Habitat for Humanity only, even though they are not yet the owner and I will make note of that in the draft decision when the time comes.
And if I could just clarify, the, the opinion I gave was based on the representation that Habitat eventually will own the property if it goes forward. So that's, so that, that would be sufficient under those terms.
Okay, okay. And I understand that they can't get permits, they don't want the property and so on and so forth, and everything becomes moot. Um, other questions or information from, from the board that the board would like to see?
Woody, I think the public safety piece of it was, was, was more so right related to the entrance and egress from the driveway. And it sounds, it sounds like that.
On Hall Street in particular, not, not on Jerusalem Road.
And it sounds like that checked out. I, I don't know if it's enough to, we just note that in the, in the notes or if you need like an email or something for the file or from.
Well, I think we could kind of offline insert John Howland's comment that he is, you know, he met with the police and fire and they didn't seem to have any public safety concerns of, of major importance. They might do a traffic monitoring periodically to check on speed, but I can put that in because that was, you know, that is relevant and has been part of this tonight's discussion. So we, so with that, oh, how about public? Cassandra, is anybody in the Q and A line?
Have anybody?
Okay, I, I will note, it was interesting that I think Susan Sardina, who spoke last, at the last meeting, noted that this is the first kind of standalone construction for affordable housing in the town of Cohasset. Everything else has been a retrofit or, you know, modification. So that's, I hope, a very nice piece of progress and I hope there are other opportunities that will come up. So with that, I would make a motion to close the hearing. We have 40 days to file this decision being a 40 days. So we have plenty of time to, I have plenty of time to modify my, my draft decision in the next day or so. So I've moved it to close the hearing.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we will take up the discussion a bit later in terms of the draft, but no new information other than what John Howland reported. Secondly, the next piece of business is 508 Chief Justice Cushing Highway. Peter Capizoli and Richard Henderson, his attorney, have once again requested a continuance. Maybe John, since you're here, could you bring us up to date on, on the reason for the continuance?
Mr. Chair?
Likely, sorry.
So it's Joel. I don't believe you took a vote on closing here.
You're absolutely right. Oh, my Lord. I'm so eager to get, okay, so let's, let's go back to the 808, 810 Jerusalem Road. Moved. Was it seconded?
Yes.
Yes. And all in favor? Woody, you're the guy.
Dave McMorrissey.
Matt Watkins.
Lee Darcey.
And Charlie, you're muted. Charlie Higginson, if you're there, you're muted. Otherwise, it'll be a five zero vote. Okay, so that, that has been approved. The hearing is closed. So the second one is 508 Chief Justice Cushing Highway. John Howland, could you post us briefly on?
Yes, I had done a, a site visit today to the temporary office has been relocated. He's no longer operating any business out of that office. There is a for sale sign on it. Also shrubs have been planted along the north corner of the driveway and all, any vehicles or equipment on the left-hand side of the property have been removed and grass seed is planted as well. The Conservation Agent, I spoke with her today as well. She has a site visit scheduled for next week on the property to review the stormwater management. If that's come through, we're still waiting for an ASBIL. I assume now with the plantings done, they could kind of move forward to get that ASBIL to start to close up the, the open ends of the stormwater permit.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, at this point, he's making good faith efforts, correct, to move? I mean, that's my takeaway.
Yes, I, I, again, the last three weeks, we have seen work being done, you know, week by week, materials there, planting's done, the vehicle moved. Again, there's no use of the, the office or storage office now. So and there is a for sale sign. I did look inside and again, all this equipment has been moved to the indoors to the office there.
Okay, well, board, do you have any questions to John on this one? This is one of our longer standing hearings. Cassandra, anybody in the, in the Q and A line?
There is not.
Is, so I would make a motion to grant the request of filed by Attorney Richard Henderson to continue this, this hearing. Is this hearing continued, the request, Cassandra, for one month or is it continued indefinitely?
Uh, the letter was for July.
For July, okay. So I would make a motion to accept the request of the applicant's attorney to continue this hearing until our hearing in July. We have a second. That's July 12th.
A seconded. And Woody, do we need anything, you know, a letter extending our time on this one or we okay?
Being a special permit? Um, Joel, I mean, I don't know, we've had these continuances requested by the applicant, not by ourselves.
Right. With a special permit, your 90-day clock to make a decision only starts when this, when the public hearing is closed. And given that the public hearing is being continued at the request of the applicant, it's not a case where the applicant might claim that it's been unduly extended. So you're fine as long as they're asking for continuances, the clock hasn't started running.
Okay, thank you.
But this is what a a revision to a special permit that was issued. I don't know if that makes any difference, but that's what this is, right?
Well, that's a good point. No, it doesn't, doesn't make a difference. It's, it's treated, it's an amendment basically, the special permit. So it's treated like the original special permit procedurally.
Okay. So I've made, I've made a motion to continue this until July, our hearing of July 12th. Do we have a second? David McMorris signifies a second. All in favor? Woody, you're the guy.
Dave McMorrissey.
Lee Darcey.
Yeah.
Matt Watkins.
Okay, it's five to nothing. Charlie, are you, you're still muted, but I mean, he's in the hospital in rehab, so he may not be able to join us actively. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the 30 Windy Hill Road. The request of the Corvets to construct an addition under the second story. It's somewhere around, I think, seven, seven feet extension on the second floor only. There's no change in the footprint. Um, we did get to see a draft today from Lee. And before we turn to you, Lee, there is, is the applicant here and would like to speak?
This is Dick Rockwood. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So we submitted the drawings. Shall I pull my screen up for this?
It may not, well, I don't know.
Okay, so what I submitted was the drawings, the existing house is non-conforming on its left side. It's a 20-foot required setback and we're looking at mine, so we're about 16.9 feet. Actually chimneys are included, so it's 15.5 feet. So what I did was I diagrammed out the small portion that we're asking for. What we're doing is extending a dormer over the existing non-conforming footprint of the house. And it's basically about 7.75 square feet that we're adding in that special permit, you know, request area. And I've sent you drawings that show the rear, the side of that, basically the extension of that second floor dormer.
Okay.
Don't know if you have those in front of you to?
Well, I, I think, yeah, I, we've seen it pretty much before. I've got one bone to pick with you though, and that is the, the application itself. Item eight, area regulations existing and proposed. Most of them are, are incorrect.
Uh, let me pull that up myself.
And, and before we, we finally, finally decide or finally file, this has to be corrected.
What?
At least the version I have.
Okay, well, there was a newer version sent in.
Yeah, this is the one I'm looking at. This is the one I got in my packet. Not date stamped.
The existing house on the existing lot, those numbers came from the surveyor. Percentage of lot acreage.
Well, what do you have, for instance, for, for the lot size?
Okay, so hold on a second. I have all that in front of me. I have, you have to Okay, for the lot size, it's a 35,000 square foot lot.
Yeah. What is, what is existing? You say 35,000? The plans, engineered plans show 20,016. That's a pretty significant difference.
Who is?
And it's not so much that, that this, this little seven-foot square, square foot addition, which doesn't change the footprint of the setback, is serious, but the filing itself is, that's just typical, almost. I would say at least half of the data between existing and proposed are, have discrepancies. It's not a hard thing to, to fix, but I don't like to approve a, a decision based on inaccuracies in an accurate filing.
And I would have gotten that off of the site plan. So I'm pulling that up myself here.
Well, I've got the site plan by Stenbeck and Taylor, existing lot areas 20,016. It's not 35,000. I'm just saying the whole thing, it's not hard to do, but I think you're going to have to just sort of correct this. I do not like approving an application with, with incorrect data all over it. Okay, we don't have to dwell on each of these. I can certainly tell Cassandra where.
Oh, it's, it's minimum lot area is 35,000 square feet.
Yeah.
Okay. And the existing, that got carried across. Okay, the existence, it's on his site plan.
Well, it may be on the site plan, but I want it on the application. I want the rear setback corrected, side setback corrected, both of them, coverage corrected, structural and building, they're all wrong in the application. And there's really no excuse for that. Not that hard. All you have to do is look at an engineer site plan and probably take two minutes of your life and make it correct.
Good with you. I did not have that site plan when that application was. I don't know.
It's not, it's not material in terms of our decision, I think, going forward, but there's no excuse for inaccuracies of this sort.
Right.
Okay, do we have anybody, any questions of the, of Mr. Rockwood? Before we close the hearing?
I have one question. In the last hearing, we had a note from the Conservation Commission that I guess a drainage or a site visit was scheduled and I wondered if there's anything that happened on that yet.
I know that the engineers had done something about drainage to turn into to the town for the watershed, but I have not personally been involved with that.
Cassandra, have we heard from the Conservation Commission or any other boards in this application?
Uh, not since the last meeting, no.
Because I, I think there was an earlier memo to you from, what's her name, Caroline or something?
Charlotte.
Charlotte, saying that there were a couple of conservation, she thought there may be the need for stormwater, I don't know. One or, one or two things in this application, but we've heard nothing since then.
No, I haven't heard anything since then.
I don't know. Should we continue the hearing?
Well. I, I can't answer the question about the conservation.
John Howland, do you know?
Yeah, I, I know that Charlotte has been out to the site and viewed it twice, I believe. And I think both times she was satisfied. I, I don't think she had any concerns. There were a couple of questions from the neighbors that she responded to. I, I think she answered, answered the neighbors with the questions.
Okay.
I don't think we need the Conservation.
All right. Dave has the floor. Go ahead, Dave.
I don't think we need anything from the Conservation Commission on this, but I just had noticed that, that she had said she was going out to do a, a stormwater review. But it's not really part of our jurisdiction on this particular application.
Okay. And I guess a failure to, not failure, but silence indicates that she had no concerns or we would have received certainly something by now. Okay, well, I, is there anybody in the queue there, Cassandra?
There is not.
Okay. Well, I would make a motion to, oh, have, what we, oh, yeah, okay, yes, the deliberation's coming up. I'd make a motion to close this hearing. Um, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Lee has seconded it. Woody, you're the guy.
Dave McMorrissey.
Lee Darcey.
Mike Dickey, I.
Matt Watkins.
Okay, so the hearing is closed. We will discuss Lee's draft in, in a short while. The fourth item is filed by Thomas Reardon to construct a pool in the floodplain at 46 Hobart Lane for a special permit under 97. Is there, have there been anything, any recent developments, Cassandra, or?
I'm pulling forward Brendan now.
Okay.
Yes, good evening. I'm Sullivan, Kevin R. Consulting. I represent the owner, Thomas Reardon. So I have not submitted, it's my own fault, any revised plans for the backup for the ZBA application. We have gotten approval through Conservation for a notice of intent and stormwater permit. And we also have an approval for a large home review through the planning board. Um, so I think at this time, I respectfully request to continue until July.
Okay, you'd like to continue until July?
Yes.
And for what purpose? Just help me out.
Um, so we revised the.
Oh, for the submission of revised plans?
Yes, submission revised plans, yes.
Okay.
Um, I just, it, it just, you know, as everybody's been a little crazy around here, so I just forgot to send them in and I apologize.
Okay, and, and nobody, to my knowledge, is assigned, has been assigned that to draft a decision on this matter, is that correct or?
To my knowledge, no.
Okay, well, if, if that doesn't put you out in you know, give you a real problem, I would move that we accept the applicant's request to continue this until July 12th. This hearing at which time, and in the meantime, you will be submitting Brendan the, you know, requisite adjustments to the plans and things.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so before the evening closes, we'll make an assignment here for a draft decision. So I've moved that we accept the applicant's request to continue until July 7th, 12th.
Seconded.
Okay, moved to seconded. All in favor? Woody, you're the guy.
Dave McMorrissey.
Lee Darcey.
Michael Dickey, I.
Matt Watkins.
Okay, so that's five to nothing. Um, we now have one other hearing, but it was scheduled for, this is a continued hearing to 8:20 uh, tonight and it's now only 7:25. There is some administrative business that won't take 40 minutes, 45 minutes, but nevertheless, I don't know, what's, what do you recommend, Dave or others? Should we accelerate this, the, the hearing on 46 Border Street or should we take care of our administrative business? We do have, go ahead.
Sorry. So the agenda times are just approximate. The advertised time is always seven.
Okay. What's the wish of the board? Do you want to go segue right into 46? Order, or do you want to take up the enforcement actions and whatever?
Well, I think my opinion is, is since we are ahead of schedule, maybe we should do the other decisions and then by that time, more time elapsed and we can, 46, because I'm sure who's presenting, but I don't see Adam Brodsky on.
Yeah, we can't really have a hearing without him.
So.
Okay, well, well, okay, we have the following pieces of business. Um, there are two kind of requests for enforcement, one of which is well underway, but it is, I think, important that we register our, you know, concern and that has to do with Old Salt House. There's also enforcement action up on the highway at the Stop and Shop Plaza that we are requesting John, of John. We have to just agree that the 534 Beechwood Street hearing, um, we had an incorrect continuance date. It's really been requested to continue until September of this year, not August. Um, so we could certainly vote that, we could approve the meeting minutes, the next zoning board meeting, we could. In fact, can we, Joel, can we segue, can we deliberate on two closed hearings for which drafts and then go back to an open hearing or do we have to stay topically on open hearings?
Uh, if I understood the question, you mean, can you open a hearing on one, keep it open and then go to a second one and then back to the other one?
Not exactly. Can, can we do some of these administrative items and not open the 46 Border Street yet? Until we've dispensed with the administrative items and maybe even voted to approve or not two closed hearings for which we have drafts.
Yes, again, I'm not 100% certain I understood the question, but putting aside Border Street.
Help me.
Yeah. Putting that aside, obviously you'll take that up whenever you take it up, but you're you're considering opening these or just, well, opening hearings on these enforcement matters or are they actually hearings or they just?
Well, I Well, I, 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 it's really a request. Of the board, if the board agrees that to uh request John to take, John Helen to take enforcement action, it's not binding.
I see.
Request.
So they're not actually uh. Agenda items for which there was a public hearing noticed?
No, it's noticed in our public hearing. Enforcement, discussion of zoning enforcement, but for instance, for three eighty, four hundreds, Chief Justice Cushing Highway.
Right, but that's just uh, uh, an agenda item of the boards, it's not a public hearing that was advertised in the newspaper and so forth, is that correct?
Right, I guess. Is that correct, guys?
Yes.
Sandra, John?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, so, so you can, yes, you can take them up a- as you wish, there really is no formality about it. Um, just start the discussion on the agenda item and. Conclude it now or put it off till after.
Okay, and we can, we can also deliberate on the two draft decisions now, get those out of the way, and then. Oh, I propose that we do, do that first. There's, there are two draft decisions. That the board has received, admittedly, the uh, the uh. The one in Jerusalem Road, the affordable housing uh didn't get to you until fairly late today, so. The uh board may, members may not have had a chance to review it. But we could certainly discuss that and then discuss Lee's draft. Uh, of uh, of the other um, the, the decision just held, so of uh. Hobart Lane. So. Not Hobart Lane, Windy Hill. Um, at any rate. Um, I drafted a decision this afternoon, by the time I finished. Uh, approving the uh, uh, Friendly Forty-B, if you will, um, application. With, with the appropriate waivers of dimensional requirements. And citing the, you know, their, their agreed to stipulations to keep this. Um, duplex uh in perpetuity as affordable housing. Uh, there was uh only the one concern raised, we heard a few minutes ago about speeding traffic on Hall Street. But that seems to have been resolved uh favorably by the police and fire chiefs. Does the board have, I just raised, does the board have uh concerns or issues or just questions about my draft decision? I'm not.
Not, I thought it was very, I did read it this afternoon, I thought it was very clearly written, and I think um your, your follow-up questions. Um, will provide the basis for us approving or discussing and approving your decision, your draft decision.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, this seemed pretty uh. Obvious to me, but uh, Dave, did you take a look at it? Uh, you're muted, so it's hard to. Um, Dave, you're muted still. Oh, wow.
Here we go. I had the uh document up on my screen and I couldn't find the Zoom screen. Um, yeah, I, I didn't. You know, scrutinize it, but I read through it and it seemed very clear to me and um, I thought it was. A good job and says everything we needed to say, that particularly the conditions on the uh. Maintaining them in perpetuity are the most important parts of it. It all looks good to me.
And Carolyn Murray had did a big chunk of the. Of the uh findings uh at the back end, I think number seven on. Well, hers, thanks. Thanks, B. But I would, um, any other discussion, I think this was uh pretty clear, there's no real. Uh, issues or concerns, it's, it's a. Probably the only way this lot is ever going to get used at three thousand five hundred square feet. Um, and it's for an excellent cause, and they seem to have done their homework.
Yeah, Woody, I thought it looked good. The only, as I was looking at my notes, the only. You know, I know that the speeding came up as a public safety uh thing, which, which you mentioned, but I think more so related to. Our. Kind of jurisdiction was just, I think what the public safety officials were taking a look at were, was like the two separate entrances for. Parking and the fact that, you know, they're as far away from the intersection as possible, and it sounded like they were. Good with the plan, how, how it looked, but that's maybe more of the focus than the, than the, than the speeding issue out there, you know, when it comes to the public safety. Component is just the driveways proximity to the intersection.
Mm-hmm. John Helen, uh, a point of view on that one? You've had the discussion with him.
Uh, yes, one of the driveways is already in existence and shared with, um, I think it's two thirty-seven. Uh, so that, uh, you know, a- again, that. That already exists, the other driveway off Jerusalem Road was at the far end of the property. Uh, we're really only kind of, there is a stop sign on the northbound uh way, and in the intersection, it slowed down people. Uh, but the other way, a- again, that conversation was. Uh, you know, did take place with the police chief as well as uh, uh, Brian Joyce from the Department of Public Works, so. Again, in, in their view. With the property location, that was uh the best possible location uh for both that they had.
Okay. Are there other observations in the part of the board? I guess not, otherwise I would make a motion to uh. Approve the decision as drafted uh with, with the uh. Uh, amendment uh of John Helen's conversation, um, I don't think there's anything else of uh substance. To be reported on this one, so I'd make a motion to approve the uh decision as drafted.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded, Woody Chitik, I.
David McMorrissey.
Lee Darisai.
Michael Dickey.
Matt Watkins.
Okay, five to nothing. Uh, the second. Draft decision is Lee's draft on thirty Windy Hill. Which we got today. I, I liked it, I thought it was good, I. And since we're not waiting for anything else on, from Conservation Commission, I, I think uh what you drafted. Looked pretty sound to me, but how about the board?
Well, I do have to make a comment, there was three applications, uh. Several site plans, and I did have an issue, and the, so the numbers that I did put in for the uh requirements, section eight. Were placeholders, because I was going to ask the question that you asked, but if you went, uh, you asked it first, because. The numbers did not make sense, and I was shaking my head, but I figured I could just insert them later. I did actually go to the site and uh walk around it, took some pictures, and um, it is. Mostly built, um, but it is, it is exactly how it was portrayed, it, it is built, uh, it doesn't increase the footprint, it is. A small, um, it's a small dormer uh over an existing first floor, so it is, uh, it's not extending uh the footprint. And it is a very small increase to the overall addition, uh, and there already was a uh. There already was a large, not large, there already was a section in the setback, um, and this is just. Um, on the second floor, and the first, the first floor, um, the second floor addition does not extend over the entire first floor. It only goes about halfway um over the first floor of the building. Um, so it, it, I viewed it as a minimal um addition and um. A small amount um. Uh, in the setback.
So, other board observations or comments? Anything? If not. I'd make a motion to accept the decision as uh drafted. At with, with the, the corrected numbers. I, I think, Lee, you'll find that the site plan has all the, the proper numbers. This is just sloppy, a really. Sloppy application, but other than that. I've made a motion to accept Lee's draft.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor, Woody Chitik, I.
David McMorrissey.
Lee Darisai.
Michael Dickey, I.
Matt Watkins.
Okay, we have um. Uh, discussion of zoning enforcement, why don't we take um? The three eighty to four hundred Chief Justice Cushing Highway. Uh, first, um, that was a, actually, we, most of, most of, of us. Sat on that decision back around twenty seventeen. The, the uh property owner came before us requesting uh to build some affordable housing. Some twenty-some-odd units. Well, not all affordable, but uh being rental, they would all count toward our uh affordable housing inventory. And one of the concerns we had as a board, and I think Dave's got, you know, you can correct me if I don't, if my recollection isn't quite right. Um, our concern was the front of the building goes right on into the uh parking, uh, stop and shop parking lot. And that's no place uh under the presumption that some of these units will be occupied by families with children. It's not important whether it's one unit or twenty. Um, that's no place for a child to play. Uh, the side. Of each side of these buildings, again, was fairly heavily trafficked with um. Uh, trucks and, and loading, and so we talked to the applicant about having the rear of this building. Be what's known as a recreation area, not asphalted, but a, a grassed-in area with uh. Swing set mentioned, or some sort of a place at a, mentioned, et cetera. Um. I drove by there a month or so ago. And lo and behold, everything in back is asphalted, striped for parking. There are, there's HVAC, there is uh heavy equipment back there. Uh, again, it's no place for children to play. It's, it's an accident waiting to happen, so the enforcement act of the, action is to suspend the. Special permit and to ask John not to issue an occupancy permit until um. The conditions of our special permit back uh in twenty eighteen are met in full. And I, I. Go ahead, John.
Well, I, I did. Inform them uh that, again. The zoning uh permit would need to be enforced. Uh, or zoning decision would need to be enforced as part of the occupancy permit, they have several other. Steps to take to get into that, between turning on the water, the final sprinkler test, the final building inspection. Uh, so, so they are aware of this now in writing, so that they, you know, they can. You know, address it to my satisfaction, or, or something that's not gonna, it's, it's, you know, they've been warned. Uh, as we said, so they're, they're, it's, it's pretty clear, uh, it's on to the, you know. Other stuff that they have to do, and this is one of them uh that will need to be met, so. Uh, they have yet to come back with a solution, uh, but they know it's, they're aware that it's there. And that it has to be met before any occupancy is, is going to be issued.
Okay, good, we, we should, um, Cassandra, we should get a copy of that, of John's letter to the. Um, Mr. Stasko to, to the board, just for our files.
Sure, I'll, I'm in front, or I'm back Friday, I'll send along.
Okay, so this is, this is kind of in the works, I mean, that was my. My concern, not your uh enforcement abilities, trust me, I mean, there's nothing to do with that, but this is again, uh, but something that. Deviated from a special permit. That I think the board, Dave, uh, took pretty seriously, didn't we?
It was a, it was a substantial concern at the time and still is. And I think the condition that we put on there about having that area. Um, was based on the plan that we approved, and I would expect that. When the project is finished and they are ready to move in, that it, it's going to be what the plan was. And that's what we approved, and I don't see any reason to deviate from that. I know he did have a septic system back there that he's not going to have, but that doesn't mean that the recreational area shouldn't be there.
And if it deviates substantially from the plan, it should go back for review.
Yeah. Okay, well, I think it's, I, it sounds like we're all on the same page, I mean, it, it's been noted now, and that's, that's eighty percent of. What's needed, because this was just done without any notification. To John or anybody else, and you wouldn't see it. I don't know what prompted me to drive back there, but something did, and. It, it didn't look right. So, um, so we are in agreement then, um, I would. I had phrased it as sort of a request of John, but we have his verbal. You know, testimony tonight, I don't know if we need to take a further action or not. It's, it's just requesting him to.
Yeah, I mean, the one thing is, as much as uh. You know, because they haven't moved in, they're not in violation yet, so. Although, you know, they, yeah, but, but now that they're aware uh that they really can't be in violation and get their occupancy, so. Uh, you know, it, it's kind of, you know, the, the ball's in their court, uh, you know, to.
Okay, well, just, just keep us informed, keep us, you know, when there's a development, there went something new. But I, I don't see, get a sense. Uh, unless the board, somebody on the board has a different point of view, I don't get a sense that we. Are going to entertain relaxing the special permit condition. Which is, to my mind, a public safety issue more than anything else, it's not an amenity. Um. So, okay, I, I mean, I think that. Since, since the purpose is not to enforce it, but just to keep, you know, just to notify John, we've done that verbally. And I think we could move on, I'd like to, John, could you post us in forty-four Border Street, the uh? Um, issue with the old Salt House and.
Yes, the old Salt House um is actually um. They still own the land and have access to the land where they did the off-site parking in the past, so that hasn't changed hands yet, so again. They were in a situation where they're, they're still under their old decision. Uh, so moving forward, I think by the time uh, you know, a year from now, uh, or, or when that. S- they open up next season, that would be the time that they'd change the address of the off-site parking. You know, to meet the requirement, so as it. Now, clients, uh, but they're, they're aware, again, that before, uh, you know, when they make that change over and they. Uh, change the address of the off-site parking, that they'll have to uh submit that um, uh, to the board.
Okay, I mean, I think that's.
I, I noticed that it's a pile of rubble in front of that parking lot now. Um, so I assume that they're getting ready to begin construction, are they going to be? Doing construction in the area where the parking is? During, during the summer season?
I, I think they're making room, uh, you, you know, they, they, they have Margin Street available, they're making room in that area. Once they finish with the demolition, uh, so they will live kind of both places there. Again, they, they've shown ownership of twenty-two Margin uh there, and then they showed ownership of, of this site too. Uh, so we've, we're they, we have been working with them, we haven't issued the building permit. Uh, yet, because they're waiting for uh, but view, view easements and a couple other. Uh, items to get, get done, I think the bond issue was, but the, they're working on those items and they. Part of the parking plan will be, they have that uh cleared away too.
Okay. Yeah, no, I'd be satisfied with, uh, I, I, I think they're well intentioned, uh. And they understand what they have to do, uh, thanks to John, so. We just have to be sure that uh they, they stick with it.
Yeah, and we have had, we have had a response from their council to indicating that, you know, they're aware of it, and. It, it, you know, that it will be addressed as time goes on.
Okay. Um, all right, that's great, I appreciate that, um. Did we, do we have to, Cassandra, take a vote on correcting the continuance for five thirty-four? Um, Beechwood Street to September twenty twenty-two as opposed to August twenty twenty-two?
I think it would be good to just do it as a formality.
Okay, well, I'd make a motion to uh do just that, uh, correct the uh continuance date for five thirty-four Beechwood Street. From August of this year to September, our meeting in September. From August of this year to September, our meeting in September, at the request of the applicant. Okay, moving seconded, Woody Chitikai.
David Morrissey.
Lee Darcey.
Mike Dickey, I.
Matt Watkins, I.
Okay. I've, I've gone through the, the minutes that Cassandra did, I don't know if other people have had a chance to. Charlie Higginson, I know, went through, there was one small error, he did not vote on the Hobart Lane decision, he was listed as having voted, but. He accused himself, that's been corrected by Cassandra, so. There may be a couple of grammatical things, Cassandra, but I, rather than take people's time up here, there's nothing of substance, it was. You know, little nits and nats. They were thorough, I appreciate what you did, I mean, this, doing minutes are not easy. If them make sense out of garbled conversations. Are, are we at a point where we could approve those meeting minutes, or would you like, would members of the board individually like to? Request that we hold off until our July hearing?
I read them, I thought they were fine. And accurate.
Yeah, I saw, no, but anybody else? Otherwise, I think we could.
I, I'm, I'm good, Woody.
Okay. We got three goods.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay, so I'd make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of May third, twenty twenty-two. Subject to any small grammatical or spelling issues.
Seconded.
Okay, moving seconded, all in favor, Woody Chitikai. Woody Chitikai.
Lee Darcey.
Michael Dickey, I.
Matt Watkins, I.
Okay, the next zoning board meeting is July twelfth, I had made a request. The board, it turns out I'm going to be out of the country for the first two weeks in August. Given the significance of the hearing about to reopen. In a, in a couple of minutes. I have a request, which I have maybe never made of the board, which is to move the August hearing until the. What is it, the sixteenth or something, Cassandra, of August, it's the Tuesday. Third week. I put that in my email to you, but I don't remember.
Uh, yeah, I'd have to double check that.
But let me see, August sixteen. So that would be the third Tuesday of the month, not, not the first. Just to keep continuity flowing and, and making sure that we all, all the participants. Who have been at every hearing, continue particularly in this one.
I, that date's fine with me.
Lee, you okay? You're muted, so.
No, I will be on vacation.
Okay, Lee will be on vacation, Mike.
I think I'm scheduled to be dropping my daughter off at college.
Hmm. Well. And Charlie, I don't know about, and Matt.
I, I think I look good for the sixteenth. But yeah, if we wanted to look at other dates, I can.
Yeah, Lee, how long are you on vacation?
Uh, that's my first day, I'm gone from the sixteenth to the twenty eighth, seventh, I believe.
Good. Anybody meet on the fifteenth, which is a Monday, I don't know, Cassandra, if that conflicts with other town boards, though.
I can do the fifteenth.
And, and Mike, when do you, when do you hop?
That, I, Woody, I hate to say, but that's the two-ten Nationals up in Gull Lake.
Oh. Oh. They still have two-ten Nationals? Okay, well, how long are you going to be in Gull Lake? We could move it for another week, but then all of a sudden we're in September. I, I would like.
I, the, the Gull Lake thing is, I'm gonna go up, do the, the. The event, and then I've kind of committed to help my brother, you know, deliver his boat. In Lake Michigan, and then I'm gonna come back and then take my daughter down to college, so.
That's too, too crazy, you'll be, you'll be whipped.
Yeah, so I, I could do it, you know, I, I, I could do it like kind of the week of the twenty, you know, twenty-second, I think I'll be back from. From dropping my daughter off, that, that would work.
I'm away that full week.
Okay, well, we need. I, I, I think we should do it on the sixteenth, and, and Mike, you can, you can keep up to speed. On any submissions, since you've, you know, attended all our hearings. By looking at the minutes, and this is recorded, is it not, Cassandra?
Yeah, I, I, I can commit to playing some catch-up, Woody, I, I don't have a problem with that.
All right.
Sorry, Lee, do the same?
Lee has gone the sixteen. I'm gonna be in Alaska, I'm good, I'm gone, there's a time difference, so. I'll be gone from the, as I said, the sixteenth, coming back the twenty-seventh.
Could you make a meeting on the fifteenth, or are you?
I could make a meeting on the fifteenth, yes.
Well, I'd make a motion that, that we. Set August fifteenth, Monday evening. As, as our August meeting, we will at least have five members of the board. You know, at the, you know, that have attended regularly, and, and Mike can get up to speed. Based on anything that may be submitted, so. If I made that motion, does that agreeable with the board?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, Woody Chitikai.
David Morrissey.
Lee Darcey.
Michael Dickey, I.
Okay, so it's moved to Monday, the fifteenth. The last hearing. That we have is forty-six Border Street. I would like Attorney Brodsky present.
He is here and his team is ready.
Okay, well. All right, let's invite them in. Yeah, I've got two pieces of business that once, hi, Adam. You're muted, but I see you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Adam Brodsky, on behalf of the applicant Co Lobster LLC.
Yeah, okay, well, I've got, I've got two kind of businessy issues here. To start off with, first of all, we got. I think five submissions late yesterday afternoon. We all understand that our policy is seven days in advance or seven plus one, this seems to be a pattern. I'm not prepared to discuss any of the submissions made yesterday. They were, they came in too late, and I didn't have time. Allocated to read and study them all, I would propose that we take up those submissions in July.
Mr. Chair, good evening, I thought that we had filed our submissions electronically at the end of last week. We actually met with Mr. Helen on Friday morning, and as a result of that conversation. We did an additional supplemental, but I also believe that that went in on Friday. So I'll.
Friday or what?
Friday's four or five days too, I, you know, this has come up pretty much every single hearing, and I. I don't have time. To look at these things on a short period of time, and it's, this is a pretty complex hearing. I try to take this stuff seriously and do my homework so that I know what I'm doing. And it seems like every time we have a hearing on this, you dump a bunch of stuff on us three or four days ahead. And we're supposed to digest it all, and I, I don't, I can't do that, I don't want to do that. And I, I don't think that we should consider anything that was submitted outside of seven days, I, I just, I'm.
Yeah, well, that's certainly my, my point of view, although I only got mine yesterday. I don't know when, Adam, you think you sent it, or when you did send it, but I'll tell you, it only arrived in my email. Box fairly late yesterday afternoon. I wasn't even here.
Yes, sir, I, I'm happy to be corrected by any member of the team, but our intention, and I believe that we did get that to the town at the end of last week.
Well, that's still not enough time, that's not, that's not seven days.
And, and I, I understand that that is the policy of the board. It's not a regulation, it's not a requirement, and we're doing the best that we can do. Under continued difficult circumstances with all professionals, and I don't know if you see this in other hearings. But it's still continues to be very difficult to get our work done. We've had outbreaks of COVID in my office, I know that great, great, Grady is out, having outbreaks of COVID in their office. And we're trying to manage, still manage a difficult situation, so while publicly it feels that the pandemic may be waning. Professionally, I can assure you that it's incredibly difficult to continue to do work and do work in a timely fashion. So, I, I, all I can do is extend our apologies to the board. But we're doing our, our, our best, given the resources that we have, we have no. There's no advantage to us to delaying this, there's no advantage to us aggravating the board by providing submission.
No, and there's no, no advantage to, to the board or to you if we have not reviewed material. And not because we're, we don't want to review it, but because it wasn't available to us. So in this case, and as David said, I don't know, I'd like to hear from, from my colleagues. But if this were the first time, or even the second time. It could be excused, but it is every time. And I think enough is enough, but how do my colleagues on the board feel about this? Somebody?
I, I would just say, if, if any, any member of the board doesn't feel they've had enough time to review the materials and the materials haven't been submitted. You know, in excess of, of seven days, then I don't think we have any obligation to do anything but say we got to push it down the road.
Okay, that's.
That it's difficult to review all of this information on, through emails. Because it's a lot easier if, if it's turned in the seven days in advance, and Cassandra can send us all an email to come and pick up. The hard copies, so we're not trying to look at. These plans and site plans.
Site plan, I, I literally needed a magnifying glass. On my computer. To, to even understand what it was. So I, I don't know, I mean, how do you feel mad about this?
Yeah, I share the same opinion, I mean, I can't really. Give it the right level of review when it comes in that way.
Yeah. Okay, well, there's a second piece of business, though, I would like to discuss, and I think it's to the advantage of the applicant. Frankly. I disagree with the applicant's interpretation of seven point one. And how you count parking spaces. And I, I've thought a lot about it, at least, and had an opportunity to talk to town council. I think seven point one E. Barely applies, only in one very limited situation. Does, does seven point one E apply? And because seven point one E deals with mixed-use restaurants in highway business districts. A, this is not a mixed-use restaurant situation. And B, it is certainly not in a highway business district. So I think E is invalid except for the open-air walkway. Which must provide parking, and the applicant has not submitted any square footage data. But. But we'll, we'll have to, so I would like to propose to the board. That we have a discussion here, because I think this is an important threshold issue. Which would make everybody's life easier, and certainly the applicants. Need not keep revising or reissuing material if. We are going to disagree with the fundamental principle of how do you measure required parking spaces, I think it's G. V applies to. Spaces that are called other business establishments, including retail businesses, whether service-oriented or otherwise. Restaurants are hardly mentioned in seven-one, I didn't write the bylaws. That may be regrettable, but nevertheless, restaurants are not mentioned in seven-one much. But I think this is a, a retail business, whether, and it's a service-oriented retail business. That applies to all the kitchens, all the restaurants, the seasonal kiosk space, as opposed to the size of the kiosk. It's the space that it occupies, and if there are any second-floor offices left, I think they've been removed, but they were in an earlier version. It's G that applies, I would agree with the applicant that H applies to the lobster pound. Which talks about warehouse and distribution plants. And that is true, as long as there are no retail sales, be they fresh lobsters or seafood or prepared. Meals, but if it's strictly a warehouse and distribution, I would agree with the applicant that H applies to that particular space only. And. Yes, there are other spaces that you would ordinarily exclude, public restrooms, storage, sprinkler. Thing, et cetera, you know, room, et cetera, I don't think we would have any disagreement either side on that. But the big change to my mind is that G is got to be the operative, I think. The operative. Section for most of this structure. I would agree that. Dock, docks, I'll, I'll just reserve judgment on that. But we certainly have no authority to deal with the docks, but if the docks are being accessed by people parking cars. Employees, et cetera, then I, I think there's a gray area of the law, but we can come to it, and frankly, that's a nit. It's, it's not a big issue. But I certainly disagree that with E, and I don't know how other people feel, E, E, other than, as I said, for the. Public space, open-air walkway. And that's what the open-air walkway is, it's a public space. And parking must be provided for it at one space per every eighty square feet. But I don't know how my colleagues feel, if we can agree, it would make Adam's. Life, I'm sure, you may not agree with it, but it'd make your life a lot easier than to have dueling. Systems or dueling standards, that doesn't serve anybody well.
Mr. Chig, I would like to respond, I see that Mr. Helen has his hand up, and before I speak, I would always defer to the building commissioner.
Okay. John?
Yes, just to. We, we have to be careful here that. In the section with seven point one E. You, you know, again, a meeting hall, auditorium, private club, lodge, restaurant, movie theater. Outdoor event, place of worship, those are all assembly uses.
And it's. You didn't read that thoroughly, John, it said restaurants that are part of a mixed-use development.
No, I, I.
Literally.
Yeah, but it depends where you put the. And other places of public assembly, I, I'm just stating that. The same way that a church. A restaurant, a motion pitcher, nightclub. You know, those are all places of public assembly. That, that, that's. I, I think we can't take a restaurant and put it in with a, oh, we just got to be careful taking, putting in with a, a retail operation. It, it's. Anywhere in the, in the state building code or anywhere else, it's not. Put into that category, so that, that's why I just kind of caution and, you know, to kind of. To, to make sure we put it in the right bucket before we call it that, I think it is a place of assembly. It had been proven that way, and they, you know, they, they do that the same way. You know, if you were to, you know, a church or auditorium. How would you count the seating for that?
All right, so you, you would say that, that a lot of this space. Qualifies as one space per eighty square feet of net floor area, because it's a public, public floor area. Are you, is that what you're saying, rather than two hundred square feet, one space, it's one space for every eighty feet?
Well. If you want to, you know, I'm not. Well, if you wanna, you know, I'm not saying, I'm just saying for the restaurant portion of it. Uh that restaurant portion should be under assembly use. Uh you know, the you could kind of play with it whatnot, but time and time again, a restaurant is an assembly. It it.
Yeah, but they've called out restaurants here, re- restaurants that are part of a mixed use development. And restaurants that are part of a mixed use development is repeated uh under the uh uh number of parking spaces. This is not a restaurant that's part of a mis- mixed use rest development in the light industry technology business or highway business districts. This doesn't apply. Well, if it was meant to apply to restaurants in general, it would say so.
Well, I I I'm just saying that where it says public assembly, that's a restaurant.
Then why have they defined restaurants separately? Why is the restaurant defined separately in our table of uses?
I I think the mixed use restaurant that maybe, but I'm just saying in in every, you you just got to be careful in every place. Maybe Joel of Joel is the comment, eh, a restaurant is always a place of public assembly. You you know, same as a motion picture, a theater, uh a house of worship, a nightclub, restaurant. You know, that they're a place of assembly.
Well, is it is another business uh establishment, a place of public assembly, consumer service establishments?
That could be a a mercantile use or a business use.
Golf courses, farm stands.
Yeah.
I mean, John, I I I, well, I don't know.
I I I know i- it's up to you guys to make that, but I just say, I just kind of just be careful that there is a difference there.
Well, how do other people feel? Dave, how do you feel? Dave?
I I I'm interested in Joel's um view on this. It, I guess the threshold question is, is this a mixed use development?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
It's Joel.
Yeah, yeah.
So be- before I get to answering that question, just listening to your building inspector, I had this thought, and that is how has he been interpreting the bylaw in the past? And and I get the sense and from uh, of course, I I don't have the history with your bylaw that you all have or that Carolyn has for that matter, but I I get the impression that he has been interpreting it in the past to put restaurants under section seven E rather than seven G. And uh I I think it's worth having that conversation if everybody.
Let let's hear from from John because in fact, there have been no cases before John while he's been a building inspector. So he has not had an opportunity to interpret.
Or I suppose how others have, uh because I'd looked seeing, looking at some of the um. I guess what it was that I was I'd seen references in some of the earlier decisions that put it under uh seventy. So you make a good point that it's a different building inspector, but he may be going on past practice. In any event, the the there is one thing I think we can all agree on, and you referred to it earlier that the bylaw in this respect was not well written because it clearly is an open question. Um and so I think having some sense that of what the town's done in the past is valuable. I'll hasten to say that doesn't mean you're bound by it, but I think that's useful information.
The town has only had two restaurants that I'm aware of in the last thirty years. And that was, that has been uh that have anything to do with parking, that's the Salt House in Atlantica. The properties that are abutting in this case. The the only other uh restaurant um decision was back in two thousand two or whatever, the the old De Niro's, which has become the corner stop. Uh parking was not the issue. They 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 took over a a going business and kept it going and if people want to go back into the files from nineteen seventy or something, they're welcome to, but I don't think that'll be uh too productive. So there have been no, there have been only two cases.
I guess.
And in those cases, we required um a a lot more parking. And I don't think we even cited uh 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 seven point one E. We just said you need X amount of parking spaces.
Woody, I, you know, in meeting seven point one, it seems to me that if this restaurant is part of the mixed use development, that it falls under seven one E. If it's a restaurant that's not part of a fixed use development, I think you're right, it goes under G. Because if we wanted restaurants in general to fall under E, it would say restaurants, not restaurants that are part of a mixed use development. So.
Right, right. And I and it wouldn't say restaurants that are in the business and highway districts.
Well, I I think there's two. E has two types of restaurant. Seating arrangements, one for all's all districts except the business districts. Which is this one space for three seats. And in those other districts, it's one pace space for two hundred square feet. But in either case, it has to be a restaurant that's part of a mixed use development.
Right.
Otherwise, a restaurant is going to fall under G. And I guess I don't know whether this is considered to be a mixed use development, and I think it makes, it's very important for us to know that.
Well, we're the, in the final analysis, we're the arbiters, we're the, we're the decision makers, but mixed use is traditionally um it's got the residential, you know, some some dramatically different use, not just variations on a theme. This is a a food court, if you will, proposal, where you have different uh re- restaurant formats as opposed to residential and residence, residential and as we approved down in uh South Main Street, uh the old Chiabo place, uh you know, business offices. And 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 residences. Those are the uh the typical mixed use because they're different uses. To my estimation, a restaurant uh and you look at our table of uses, uh restaurants are just are are differentiated between those that have mechanical entertainment and those that don't, and those that serve food and those that are fast food. That's all. All restaurants are lumped together. So that I don't see the mixed part. And and throwing in a little lobster pound, which is, which is less than a tenth of the square footage doesn't all of a sudden qualify this in my estimation as mixed use. It's not enough.
What is the?
Chair, this is.
And I I I'm having a discussion at the board. I'm not happy to invite everybody else too, but I want to hear from the board. Matt, I haven't heard from you or Lee or or Mike. Anybody got a point of view or or want to chime in or not?
I just.
Turn it over.
Looking forward for um Joel to um um have his read on the bylaws.
Well, we may be catching him a little at a disadvantage, but but Joel, given that this is to answer Dave's question. Uh is the the fact that there are uh five different food service establishments make this mixed use? There's no residential, there's no business being conducted here other than the service of food and and whatever, other than the warehouse.
Right, and there's a further problem that the uh the bylaw doesn't define mixed use, obviously. It would make the job a lot easier if it did. Um I I think the problem again is that there is an ambiguity in that an argument could be made for having it fall in either place. And that's why I had alluded earlier to the fact that, you know, what was some past practice that that might be worth looking at the salt house, uh how it was handled then. I think it's would will be left up to the board's discretion, really. I mean, if it, you know, there's lots of case law that says if a decision could go either way, then it's reasonable for the board to go either way. Again, that's why I point to, let's say, recent past practice, if there is any uh as one indicator. And I think then just a reasonable interpretation, you're right to point out that restaurant is tied to mixed use in section seven E. On the other hand, section seven G itemizes well more than a half a dozen types of uses, but doesn't or activities, and never mentions restaurants. And then you have the building inspector feeling more comfortable lumping it in with seventy as a place of assembly. So uh it it is a toss up. I'm glad you're having this discussion, using this time to have the discussion because I think the board uh and the applicant, for that matter, as you pointed out earlier, it'll be well served to have some clarity from the board because there is ambiguity here, but Lee, I'm sorry to say, I don't have a a magic bullet, a silver bullet answer here. Um I think I've got to toss it back to where it belongs and that's with the board.
Well, there are, there are three members of the board we haven't heard from. I certainly would like to hear from the others, you know, Adam and team as well, but uh I first want to hear from the board because I think we have, we will, we're not ready right now, but we will be making the decision in terms of which standard or standards to apply to anything going forward. Matt, do you have a point of view?
Yeah, I was just trying to do some research on the side as well, but um I I don't have a strong position on it right now as I'm looking at the two. I mean, I I did kind of follow what John was saying that the with it being a place of assembly, even though I think if you just look at the words and how they're written, um you know, it's it's not a restaurant with a, that's part of a mixed use development. But in my mind, I'm kind of looking at it and like, well, what, you know. Is the public assembly piece of it more the intent of that category versus uh versus not, you know? So I think, you know, if it's just to look at kind of the words in our bylaw, I could, I could say, yeah, hey, this belongs in G. But the reason for the long answer is, you know, like when I'm looking at, when I'm looking at E, I I can, I can also agree with the restaurants, a public assembly place. So that's kind of where we're at currently.
Well, certainly F. Libraries and museums, that's a place for public assembly, civic cultural community facilities. It was carved out differently. They could have stopped in my estimation. If they wanted to have other places of public assembly be everything where the public uh could gather, you wouldn't need F, you wouldn't need parts of G. Um you wouldn't need I. Um uh you do have J mixed uses, but uh they don't define it, as Joel points out, and you would, you wouldn't need K. You know, I mean.
Woody, maybe looking at this from the other end. Um I mean, the whole purpose of the bylaw is to make sure that there's adequate parking for the use that we're talking about. And I'm just, I'm trying to think of why a restaurant in a mixed use development would need fewer parking spaces than a restaurant standing alone. Um and it's not coming to me why that would be. I mean, there's got to be some you know, rational reason that they're not lumped together and but I really can't figure out what it might be. I mean, if if you're choosing between E and G, then there must be some difference, but I don't understand what the difference is.
Uh David, I I'm, I was kind of and again, I'm gonna say, I I'm certainly no expert and 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 uh uh as much as anything, I'm, you know, kind of just um, you know, kind of off the cuff here, but it it would seem to me that um the only, and you know, kind of following on on what you're saying, David, it would seem to me why there'd be a different rule for a restaurant and a restaurant that's part of a mixed use facility is because those other additional, you know, mixed uses quote unquote wouldn't require the same level of parking needs uh a- as as a restaurant. And so to, and and so Woody, you'd said earlier that, you know, mention a food court and and I think I would like to, or seems to me, most people would agree that a food court would not be considered a mixed use facility. It would be considered, you know, a restaurant, even though there might be different. Uh you know, there might be some chicken and there might be some fish and there might be some hamburgers, you know, a mixed use of 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 food facilities, but clearly I would, at least for me, I would not, I would not consider a a food court that had independently owned uh uh food service uh uh areas around a common, you know, kind of courtyard uh as as a mixed use facility, but a a a a mall type of thing where, you know, a a restaurant is going to have a higher concentration of people and therefore need more people than say a a uh an office, uh you know, a a CPA or a lawyer with a shingle or um even even some kind of retail establishment where, you know, you may have a few people come in and browse, but you're not going to have, you know, tables full of people. So i- it would seem to me that, again, just just, you know, my off the cuff thinking mixed use seems to be uh uh pointing at a facility that has uh uh different activities going on that wouldn't require uh the same amount of parking that a a restaurant, you know, all by itself would over the same space. Does that make any sense at all?
Does to me, but. Lee, where do you come out? So far. Lee, you're, okay.
I'm I'm kind of on the fence between both because I don't think that there's inaccurate. Um there's an accurate definition. So I I can go both ways.
All right. Well, I'd like to hear then from Adam and and team. I'll I'll just.
John's hand is up too.
What?
John has a hand up.
Oh, John, go ahead. John, you're muted.
Yeah, and just uh and I I I understand that this is a very confusing bylaw and there's a lot of gray area. But kind of you, uh if you look at E in a little bit, uh to the left hand side, it talks about the 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 mixed use part of it. But then you go over to the 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 right hand side, it it i- identifies the mixed use part of it. It arrests, you know, with with one hundred square feet. So that that in and of itself is confusing. Does a mixed use go to the one space to two hundred feet? You know, if you step back and look at that, it kind of indicates that, but it doesn't really tell you that. And 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 that's a difficult, I'm a, you know, I agree with the point, but I just, I realize there's a couple of different spaces, but every town you go into a restaurant is an assembly use. There's there's really no, it it's i- it's common, all of it, you you know, any, you go to a sit down restaurant, it's an assembly. And it kind of separates that as public assembly down there again by itself, so it kind of tells you, pulling that part of it out again to look at it through this way. There, so, and I know it's a, it's a difficult thing because it 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 doesn't specify, but it it sounds like the restaurant it's talking about is just a mixed use, and does that refer to the one space for two hundred square feet? And a- and I know there's no easy answer there, but
Well, yeah, you know, the.
The difficult part is to kind of look at like the past, where we pulled this information from, how we treat other restaurants when we count, even even the restaurants in town and and other towns that have parking into it, when we, when we try to get a count or a seat, we we look at the seat count, we don't always do square footage and the assembly, we list them as assemblies. You know, a place of assembly as part of the
I'm not sure you'd want to necessarily, if if you were the applicant, you'd want to follow that definition. Because because that leads you to the one space for every eighty square feet. That's us for a public assembly. Keep in mind that 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 the one space for each three seats or benches and all that stuff applies to meeting halls, auditoriums, private clubs. Lodges, funeral homes, doesn't, it isn't just restaurants, places of public assembly. And so I I don't, I don't know, because none of us were were around when this uh unfortunate bylaw was written. Um what what they were referring to, one one space for every three seats in a movie theater? That certainly applies, private clubs, meeting halls. But restaurants are 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 called out separately. But restaurants are, are called out separately here uh, as part of mixed use. They don't say all restaurants. They didn't have to say restaurants that are part of a mixed use development. They could have just said restaurants. And they didn't.
Yeah. And as I say, with, with the, the way the bylaw is written, it's kind of clumsy and it, you know, it comes down to you guys take a look at it, girls, uh, see what, what fits and, you know, kind of using your experience and and, and kind of putting it together. It, it, it's, you know, not, not an easy fi- fix, you know, we have, we have to pick a box to put it in and that's a difficult part.
Yeah, that's why we're having discussion of it. Adam, why don't you, uh?
Uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I, I'm going to put to one side the issue of mixed use development. As you know, we had proposed that because that was the interpretation uh, that we rely upon after consulting with the town. And as Attorney Bard noted, there's no definition of mixed use development. Uh, but I do point out that the word restaurant only appears in seven point one E. And um, you, you have reminded me to go back and look at old Salt House and that dispute. And I would refer the board to the decision of Judge Dorch Okara in her findings of fact, rulings of law and order of judgment. This is Cohasset Cove LLC versus S. Woodward Chittick, August thirteenth, two thousand four. I'm happy to provide the citation.
Go ahead, but continue on.
Yes, uh, where, and, and again, I, I can't tell you uh, whether in two thousand four the bylaw is identical to the bylaw today, but the Judge Dorch Okara wrote, and, and this again is the appeal of the denial of relief for the expansion of the old Salt House that resulted in litigation um, in the Superior Court, which decision upheld the board's rulings and was affirmed by the appeals court, but Judge Dorch Okara says, quote, "When the use is a restaurant, section seven point one requires, quote, 'one space for each three seats' or where benches are used on space for each six lineal feet of bench, comma, where no fixed seats are used as in a terminal, that's in parentheses, one space per eighty square feet of public floor area." And unless I'm mistaken, that's the exact language that exists in the current section.
Which of his findings, which number?
Uh, this is, uh, there's not, there are no numbered findings, uh, Mr. Chittick. Uh, this is under the section authority to issue special permit conditions where Judge Dorch Okara was ruling the board's decision. And at, at least in two thousand four, the parties seemingly agreed that parking for restaurant, and this particularly is the old Salt House, was determined with respect to seats and benches, which if I might remind you, Mr. Chair, was your original reaction when we had proposed parking for mixed use. I believe your response was no, you calculated based upon seats. I think your recollection is entirely accurate.
Unfortunately, I don't have the, um, the judges. I, I, I have attorney Humphrey's filings and I have our, our filings, you know, uh.
It's, it's two thousand four West Law five, six, five, seven, nine, seven.
I'm sure you can provide it to us.
Actually, what would be of more interest to me on that particular case is not what the judge's decision was, but what the board's decision was. What do we use? What do we apply? Do we apply seven one E or seven one G? Because clearly the Salt House is not a mixed use, it's a restaurant. So I, I would think what we used, um, for the Salt House should be some guidance for us.
If, if I might, if, if that's a finding of the court affirmed by the appeals court regarding an interpretation or zoning bylaw, I believe that that would have precedential effect on the board, assuming that is that the bylaw that was reviewed by the court in two thousand four is identical to the bylaw that we're reviewing now. As I said, I haven't been able to locate the two thousand four bylaw. I will endeavor to do so.
Assume it's the same there, assume it's the same for the sake of argument here tonight. You know, I mean, I, 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 I'm pretty sure you'll find that it is the same. I'm unaware of any changes.
Hopefully, if it was, if it had been changed, it would have been changed a little more clearly than it reads now.
Yeah.
So, so, and, and while I appreciate the, the discussion, um, I, I think the, the board already may be bound by precedent on this issue. We can have a discussion regarding mixed use development, but again, we, we're trying to conform to what we thought the board's view of the bylaws.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not casting aspersions on your, you know, intentions, but um, just because a, a court approved or upheld our decision doesn't mean to, in my estimation, and I'll defer to Joel, that somehow that's binding on this board forevermore for the next fifty years because a court upheld our decision. I don't see why we're bound uh, on a precedential uh, basis, uh, to go back and to seven E, table E, or whatever it is.
So i- if I might, Mr. Chittick, um, I believe I have the board's decision received on May five, two thousand, file number zero, 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 one, zero, four. Where the board writes in its decision, the reference table use E pertaining to restaurants requires one space for each three seats. Therefore, applicant would have to provide forty-two off-street parking spaces to comply one hundred twenty-four seats divided by three. In your findings, you specifically referenced that the, uh, the conditions, the applicant will provide off-street parking for the restaurant which meets the requirements of section seven point one E and seven point two, three of the bylaw. So I'm going to, again, without reviewing this in great detail, I'm going to assume that the board, at least in two thousand, in reviewing the proposed expansion of the old Salt House, uh, interpreted the bylaw as uh, requiring restaurants using parking provided in the seat methodology. Um, that was the position apparently presented to the court and the court upheld that. For the board to now take a different position with the bylaw being unchanged, I think the board might find itself at some peril.
I think the board upheld our decision. I don't think the board was so specific as to uphold each and every uh, element of finding, including which table uh, this board used. I, I don't think the board.
It's in your, again, I'm happy to provide that, Mr. Chairman. It's in your decision. That is the, that is the.
But, but, but I, I, I think you're going perhaps too far saying that the court upheld the, the use of uh, section E. The, what the court did, I think, is to uphold our, our, our decision on, um, on an appeal by, uh, an applicant. Joel, are we bound by precedent because the court upheld an appeal back in the year two thousand and two?
I'd say as a general principle, yes, the town is bound by a decision of the court uh, applying, interpreting your bylaw. I haven't read the decision, but yeah, the point of, um, a court decision is to interpret a bylaw for a town, if that's what it's doing, and yes, the town would be bound.
Yeah, I, I'd like to go back and just return to, to the, the view that I was looking for before is it, what's the bylaw trying to accomplish? It, it's trying to make sure that we have adequate parking at restaurants. And it appears that in two thousand and two, we thought that subsection E provided adequate parking for restaurants. And I guess I'd like to just ask John Howland, in his experience, applying section E to any restaurant, does that generally create adequate parking for restaurants?
Yeah, I, I think that would be a, a good standard for measuring the, the parking requirements for, for a restaurant in general. Uh, you know, with, with those two spots, uh, and, uh, you know, we, we haven't had in the last, you know, couple of years, but I, again, I can go back to other towns that I've worked in and sat on the zoning board for uh, Citroen in particular, and, and again, the parking requirements, I know they are, we determine by seating. Um, and, and had a reference, reference that, Hingham, I believe that the same, same thing. So I think it's a common practice, uh, to use that, not just in Cohasset, but in other towns. Uh, and again, it, it really comes down to deciding what, what box to use to, to make that determination because you can't make any decision on what to do to decide what category it falls into. You, you know, we could, you know, till we make that determination, other things can't fall into place.
And I like the one that works.
It really, yeah, I, I mean, and that's how the needs are met, generally speaking, wh- when when a town looks at that bylaw, it, it's considered the uses, the, the amount of parking for the use of the, of the building, X number of seats, X number of parking. That includes employees, includes staff, you know, the same way we interpret it for it, it, you know, other uses of, of assembly. It includes, you know.
So, so John, just, okay, let me, so to help me out, let's take the one space for every three seats. Uh, that's inclusive of employees as well as patrons. So the waitstaff, the, the kitchen staff, the bus boys or bus people uh, are all included in this, uh, one, one parking space for every three seats.
Really, Woody?
Well, that's the way you would interpret this, if, if, if it includes employees.
No, I would, I would assume a seat means a paying patron, not staff members.
Well, but it's silent on staff members. And so consequently, the application to, to, before us uh, has no parking for employees. As, as an additive.
For example, what do you say, we take the music circus, the, the, the way they determine parking for that, it, it is the the number of seats there and it's assumed that the, the number of seats encompass the whole building. That's how the count is done. It doesn't say we do X, Y, and Z. Uh, a- and I know it might not, uh, say delivery accounts for the, for the staff working there, but it, it, you can't really, there's no place that it says we have to count staff.
Yeah, but there is, there is a, a need, uh, as a matter of fact. I, I think parking, parking is a public safety issue. This is not a, a, a question of, is there enough? Uh, you know, is, are the parking spaces adequately, uh, designed, you know, drawn? It's a public safety issue. If you've got, if you've got, uh, uh, two, two people, somebody in the kitchen and and a waitstaff or a bus boy, plus three people, um, and you only need to provide one parking space, I cannot imagine five people crowding into a car. Parking should be adequate for all people on site, not just the, the patrons seated at a table.
Right, right, but the same way when you do the square footage, it doesn't, you know, you could do with a square footage, you come up with a number two that will accommodate, the square footage doesn't say.
Yeah, but the difference is a square footage encompasses the, the, uh, the kitchen and, and, and the background. Where you have a lot of employees.
And, and a- again, that's one of the buckets you have to pick, what, which one is gonna, gonna work if you, you know, assume the square footage. Yes, if you, if you want to use the seating, yes, but you, you just have to, it still comes down to kind of picking one there, but you can't mix them.
Why? Why can't you mix them?
It, 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 I, I don't think it's meant to be read that way that you could.
Well, the applicant has, has, has mixed them saying, and I think correctly, that the lobster pound falls under H. That's a different.
Yes, I, I mean, you can't mix them per the same way on a restaurant, you can't.
But it is, all right, to me, I mean, maybe we should just table this until July, but I'll tell you, to me, it's illogical to think that half this building, uh, from a square footage standpoint, has no provision for uh, separate parking. And I know that the Salt House, for instance, in a busy season, has a, a, a number of people that we insisted, um, park off-site down in Elm Street. That was part of our, of our thinking and an agreement. And, and there's no, no s- separate employee parking here. You've got open spaces. I'll tell you, that kiosk in the walkway have got to provide parking. They've got to because they're places of public assembly. And, and so I think, Adam, the count is, is understated by uh, some con- some considerable number, and I'm just trying to come to an agreed-upon standard, uh, that the board agrees on. Not that you agree on, but that the board agrees. And if we're not of one mind, I think we should continue the discussion and mull it over.
Mr. Chair, just to, to bring to your attention the fact that there are specific uses in the bylaw which require employee parking, specifically seven point one C and seven point one.
Right, convalescent homes, you know, hospitals, et cetera.
But, but that's, it's important because when town meeting adopted the bylaw, they made a specific determination that certain uses re- require employee parking and for the other uses, including we, we assert restaurant, they did not. The board always admonishes me to apply the bylaw. And so a strict application of the bylaw, as well as, you know, the rules of statutory construction, lead me to conclude that if the town meeting didn't put in a requirement for restaurants to have additional parking for employees, it's not required in the bylaw. And I don't see anything in the bylaw that gives the zoning board of appeals the ability to vary the parking standards for concerns regarding public safety. I agree that the purpose of the bylaw is to achieve public safety, but I don't think the board has got the ability to unilaterally vary the parking requirements. Now, I agree, this is terribly worded by law. So we believe it, it should be, you know, interpreted and applied the way it has historically, at least with respect to restaurants based upon the limited information we've got available. And so the thought that somehow the board is now going to interpret an additional requirement for employee parking for restaurants, which is in, in the bylaw, I, I think is a difficult position for the board to maintain.
Even, even if there are, from a practical standpoint, I'll make this totally up, thirty, thirty people employed at the fine dining restaurant between bus boys, waitstaff, food prep, et cetera. That's all encompassed in, in terms of the number of, uh, of tables. You could double the tables or cut, cut, cut them in half and you could still, you know, flex that. I, I don't know, it, it, it concerns me. But certain, at least we could agree that certain areas such as the, uh, walkway, uh, you, and, and the, uh, where the pop-up kiosks are going to be and so on and so forth. There's got to be parking there on a square footage basis, because there are no seats.
Yes, and, and, and we have a methodology for accounting for that, but you don't want to hear that this evening. I'm sorry, sir.
No, I, I said that, that's in addition to what you've supplied, but I'm not convinced. Uh, I, I, I understand. I mean, if this were half well-written, I mean, it's, it's, it's pathetic, but, um, they, the town also, um, saw fit to, to differentiate restaurants in a, in a mixed use and, and throw it under E and then have other, uh, maybe a restaurant is a place of a public assembly, but so too are libraries, museums, uh, retail oriented stores, showrooms, public banks, uh, so on and so forth.
I think a restaurant is fundamentally different than those service-related businesses, which is why the word restaurant doesn't appear in G.
But not all uses are, all right, but you know, y- y- you could have a bylaw that would have G be, uh, you know, two pages long if you wanted to cite all the uses.
But I, I would respectfully suggest a restaurant is a fairly prominent, uh, commercial use. And the only place where that's addressed is in section E. And at least based upon the limited information I've got available to me, that's the methodology that the town has historically used to calculate parking for restaurants, at least with respect to the old Salt House. Which is always the example that's being, you know, presented to us for consideration.
Uh, hey, it's Mike Dickey here. Adam, could I ask a couple of questions, please?
Yes, sir, I, I, of course.
Um, would, the, the, the. The 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 E talks about restaurant as as part of a mixed use facility. Are all restaurants part of mixed use facilities?
No, sir, that's that's the ambiguity in section A, so we're in full agreement.
So so if 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 the project is part of a mixed use facility, you'd use the calculation standard. In the bylaw for mixed use, if 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 it's not a mixed use facility, what would the what would the calculation be? What 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 calculation would you use?
Again, we're proposing to use what appears in the first phrase in the second column of subsection E. One space for each three seats or where benches are used, one space for each six linear feet of bench. Semi colon, that's that's the standard that we were pointed to by the board after that first hearing. That appears to be the standard that was used to determine parking for the old salt house in two thousand and four. And I think you can easily read that that provision as relating to, you know. All of those uses which are described in E and as 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 Chairman. Chittick indicated, you wouldn't put all of the uses in that category, but these are examples of uses that would fall within that. And I think that's consistent with Mister Helen's interpretation.
And I I think though, if you're going to to use E, as you just read, you need to keep going. In in the.
Yes, sir.
Rest of the space that you have there, you have one space is required for every eighty eighty feet.
So so there are three, there are three separate phrases divided by semicolons. And based upon, I believe, my application of statutory construction, they are separate independent clauses. So the first phrase is what I read to you, which is the general standard, one space for each three seats. Then after the semi colon, it says where no fixed seats are used, as in a terminal. Then you use eighty square feet of public floor, so if there are no fixed uses, as in a terminal, then you're talking about eighty. Eighty square feet per public floor area, then there's a third phrase. The third phrase is except in the light industry, technology and business districts.
That doesn't apply because we're not in any of those districts.
No, but let me finish please, because you accept that, so that that suggests that. In those districts, there's a separate requirement, then for restaurants that are part of a mixed use development. One space for two hundred square feet of net floor air, so those are three separate phrases that I respectfully suggest are. Not dependent upon each other, and so the applicable provision here is is the first. And that that would be consistent, again, with apparently what the board has done in the past. Again, I I can't speak to what the bylaw was in two thousand and four.
Okay, I. It seems to me that if you're using E for your restaurant spaces and you're that have seats. You're using the first part with three seats for one space for three seats, one space for each six linear feet of bench. The other areas of the building that you have that don't have seats is open floor area and you need one space for every square feet.
So the so and and this would have been presented to you tonight if you allowed us to present.
Well, if you give us the stuff in time, we would have. You know, that's the problem is we we I'm looking, I'm trying to find some calculation that you've made of what seating you need, I can't find it. Because I didn't get it until now, I assume there's something in there, I can't find it. If I had this a week ago, I'd have it right in front of me and we could have this discussion. That's the problem here, we spend an awful lot of time talking about something that we just don't know if it exists or not.
Adam, are are you saying that the submissions we got yesterday are not what you would have presented tonight?
No, sir, they are what we would present.
Well, you didn't make any changes from from a a month earlier.
I'm sorry?
You didn't make any seating changes or or parking space changes from a month earlier, correct?
We we did, there's a new parking calculation, it is on one of the sheets of the site plan. And there are supporting documents from Brady Consulting that explains. How we did the parking calculation as well as a parking demand study, which was also updated. And so all of that information is available, so if you look, I believe it's, and I'll be corrected by again by either Darren or or Gabriel. That the the new parking calculation is shown right on the the site plan on the first page.
I see ninety six seats. I don't have that, I I mean, is that by by the site plan, are you talking about the new site plan or something new?
So Mister McMorris is looking at the architectural rendering of a sport, we're actually talking about the Grady Consulting site plan. That was submitted last week, that has, you know, it's engineered site plan that shows the parking layout. The zoning table, the parking calculations, that's the easiest place to get this information, it's repeated in several other locations.
I I this is Aman Almira, I just wanted to jump in. Part of the timing issue too is we met with the commissioner on Friday and actually wanted to. Meet with him prior to the submitting, but we kind of held that up and we are, you know. Trying to hit these deadlines and it's and we're responding to Woody's questions, there was a number of questions there, but. The meeting that we wrapped up with the commissioner was very positive, and in fact, then those files were transmitted to the town at the end of the day Friday.
So that's really helpful since the town halls closed.
What I'm saying is that when we get it there, that's what that's that's our part of it now, we granted that seven days earlier, but that's that as fast as we can get it after meeting with John. I think that, you know, the real big picture here is, do we want to work together to try to make this come to happen? And I think we do, and it is very complicated and we're we're living with this complicated bylaw too. Poorly written and we're going around and around it. At the last meeting we had, you instructed us to do a seat count methodology. And we went and did that, and what we did is in fact, we found more parking in the lot a little bit. And we're focused on safety too, so it's a proper parking lot with dimensional, you know, layout, we got the thirty five spaces. And our count right now, we have ninety six seats, and we really need thirty three. So we were going to open tonight and talk about, in fact, withdrawing a special permit for parking. Now, maybe there's still some massaging to do and there's some ambiguity to the kiosk space, I get that. But when we did the seat count per your instruction of numbers for restaurant, numbers for coffee shop. Numbers for the covered wharf.
You you have a very selective memory.
We were all in the meeting together.
We have a very good memory.
And you said do seat count, so when we have ninety six seats, and let's also remember where we are, because again, I think it's important. We want to work together to try to make this top happen. Because where we are now is a building that has four hundred and forty two person seating capacity. And we're proposing to reduce it to ninety six, that's twenty one percent of seating capacity that's there now. And we and that seating capacity of four forty two now requires a hundred and forty seven parking spaces. Which doesn't match at all, we're reducing into ninety six seats and providing thirty three as required by the seat count with two extra. And by the way, I don't think that the term food court is accurate, I don't think that the sort of, oh, the lobster pound, sort of nothing. A lobster pound is part of the working port, but the lobster man, that's an important part of the business, we accounted for that parking. The covered, the the walkway you refer to is open to the sky, Woody. It's not a covered area, the reason it's open to the sky is to create a better experience for the town. And in fact, the access to the water sheet is part of this whole puzzle. To create a proper, you know, project that better for the town for access to the water sheet. The the public bathrooms, the facilities of public accommodation are really what chapter ninety one and what. The state looks for for a property like this, so we work so hard to take it from a really big problem. To almost an as of right in conforming parking. Now, if you want to work with us and fine tune it, let's do it, but we keep getting pushed along. And we're trying like heck to get there, but you have to decide if you want this to happen or not. And what are the massaging pieces to get through it, it's your town.
We have to decide which parts of the bylaw apply and then apply. We don't have to do the rest of it.
Could could you tell us which bylaw you want us to use or how you want us to figure that out?
That's what we're having a discussion of.
Yeah, well, can you just tell us, we've we've had four meetings and we've just wasted time and gotten nowhere in this whole process, so. If we're not going to use the bylaw and we're going to have some other formula, just give us the formula and then we'll go from there.
We'll use the bylaw, but I I think what's up.
Bylaw is very clear. Three seats.
Not very clear, that's part of the problem, yeah.
Three, three seats equals one parking space.
Right, and I I don't, I'm not.
And it doesn't say we have to have an additional for employees, that's figured into the one seat.
But but there is no mention of the word restaurant in that bylaw that says three seats. If you look at it, the only time restaurant appears. Sir, could I finish, please?
No, just all I want to know is we can go back and forth on this. Bylaw, non bylaw, whatever it is, just give us the way you want to have it for me figured out and we'll do that. I don't want to argue about.
Trying, I I would like to think we're trying. The the notion that somehow we're trying to to try to try trying to be a roadblock here.
Well, of course you are, but just give us the way you want us to figure.
There's no place for that sort of attitude, if if you want to take a confrontational standpoint. You know, Adam, you could always.
All I want to know is how how do you want us to figure the parking?
Here's the problem.
Can we just answer that question?
Why don't you be quiet for a minute and let the board?
No, because I've listened to you blab on for four times now, we've gotten nowhere, now just give us the answer, how do you want us to figure the parking? By the bylaw or some other way?
By the bylaw.
Okay, what is the bylaw?
That's the problem, the bylaw is not clear, we're trying to make sure that we have an interpretation of the bylaw that works. As Mister Omira said, you know, everybody wants this project to work. Our job is to make sure that your application complies with the bylaw, we can't make an exception out of the bylaw.
Know what the bylaw says.
If we go to town meeting and change the bylaw, it'll be a lot clearer, but we haven't done that, we have to work with what we have, we're doing the best we can. We're trying to make things work and make, I mean, our job is to make sure that there's enough parking. So that there's not a public safety issue.
I got all that.
We're not fighting with you, we're not trying to make this difficult for you, we're just trying to do what we're supposed to do.
I I would just, I would just add, and I I agree with you and I I want to keep that positive attitude too, and this is. Extremely important project, it's extremely really complicated, but. And and if you really look at what we're trying to do, it's it's such a stunning improvement. The last meeting when we presented our initial application in March, we used a different methodology for parking. And at that first meeting, which actually got bumped to the next meeting, we got so late. That's what when what you suggested, hold on, we should look at a seat count. So we actually redid all our calculations, redid all our drawings and looked at seat count. And then we thought, geez, we're so close here, I think we can be conforming, this is fantastic. If we can get this down and then, you know, discussing with Tom, do we actually sort of give up some space, what is that that kiosk space? And there was some ambiguity around what kiosk requires, but we're now at thirty five parking spaces. And by the seat count method that you asked us to look at, we require thirty three, so we're so close. And there's so many benefits to this project for the town, and I agree with you with safety. And we keep talking about Old Salt House and what are very different situations than that situation is, but it is precedent. Of how they count the the seat count and how they don't include employees or they include.
Hundred seats, five spaces.
So, yeah, and so I think. And I I granted you to have had some time to review these documents, they came in Friday, I don't know how they didn't get you on Friday or, you know, town hall is closed, but email moves. And so all I'm saying is, we'll, we're eager to finish, we're eager to get the project going for the benefit of the town. I live on Border Street too, I walk by it every day, you know, Tom is prepared, we have an A team. And we were excited tonight to show the the engineering drawing that was going to literally show. We're going to withdraw a special permit request, because based on an assignment you gave us of seat count. We're at ninety six, we require thirty three, I've got thirty five spaces, I was, this is great, so. I understand that bylaws confusing, we have to decide how to apply it for the benefit of the town. We can continue to submit more documents and you can review those, but where we are now, if you look at the drawings. Based on your last request to do seat count, we conform to parking.
My last request was never to limit. Limit it to to seat count, you have spaces that have to provide parking as well because they will be used by the public. And today, I've seen no, I've seen no, no data, now this may be in the submissions that we got yesterday.
Well, what we did on that, Woody, was what we did is we actually went into the architectural drawings and actually laid out the seats and the tables. And we actually, we, you know, we also addressed the covered wharf, which is, you know, there's got to be some seating in there. We did all that layouts, now the lobster pound, we did a different methodology there, as you point out. Because that's a very important business for the town, as we all know, we don't need to to talk about how important the lobster man are, but we we love them. But that was accounted for as well, and we still have two extra spaces. The other piece that didn't get to come out tonight was the peak manned and hours of operation is very important because. The coffee shop, which by the way, we have a an intent now of of an agreement in place, a local coffee shop, which everyone loves. To go here, chomping at the bit, so.
Not to move that's an additional spot.
So they their hours of operation don't overlap with the hours of operation with the restaurant, which is really important from a practical matter. And I think David was mentioning this, what's a practical, you know, condition here, coffee shops open at seven, closes at three. Restaurant opens at five, closes at ten, they don't overlap, so therefore, if there was a little more demand at the coffee shop, restaurant's not open. And the restaurants open, the coffee shops closed, and even and vice versa with the ice cream shop and the lobster pound with their hours of operation. And let's keep in mind the covered wharf, which is this sort of really charming component of this natural open wharf. The the railings with no windows, not going to be very well occupied in the middle of the winter. So it also has a seasonal effect, so we did all this analysis. To show that at peak demand, we only need twenty eight spaces and we're not, we're following the math, this is a math problem. So if we agree it's a math problem, and this is something where we're. Scaling the building down by fifteen, twenty percent of actual square footage, ripping open to sky, opening up, providing public access. You know, having a better safe parking lot that actually operates and has code conforming layouts. We're this close, we're this close on a on a stunning project, so I know we've got some work to do. But I just, you know, I'm urging everyone to to get beyond.
At the last meeting, Aman, I had also asked for the square footage of of some of the space. That had no square footage assigned, that that didn't come in any material that I've seen to date.
I believe we did.
But the square footage of everything.
And I'll take your word for it, but I'll I'll wait to see, I'll wait to see a hard copy.
I mean, I think, I think.
Are we going by square footage or seat count, can you let let us know on that?
I asked to see square footage because some of these have no seats. And see, you can't do a seat count if you don't have seats, such as seasonal kiosk, such as the ice cream shop. They're they're using that open air walkway, I'd like to know the square footage of that.
Well, I mean, the the open air walkway, the seasonal kiosk, there's two things.
It's going to be a place of public assembly.
It's like, it's like a sidewalk, so how does that count, you know, it's open to the sky.
Woody, the seat count is shown on the drawings for the ice cream shop. And the architectural drawings call out for the square footage, square footage is for each space.
Yeah, but I don't see the open air walkway, I don't.
There's also a spreadsheet that broke out all the spaces as you requested.
From three months ago.
Alright. Look forward to seeing it.
Yeah, I mean, I, well, you you have all the material and granted you didn't have it seven days in advance, I get that. We were trying to have a productive meeting with commissioner on Friday, the only available time was Friday, and that was a great meeting. I guess I would say big picture, we we even greatly improved what was already a great, you know, a great concept. We improved the project from the first meeting we had with you. In picking up some more parking, reducing some of the seating count to now we have. Extra parking, at least by the the seating methodology, if we need to apply a couple more seats here and there, we're we're still right there.
Okay, well, this board has not yet yet decided what methodologies plural perhaps. Will be used.
When could you let us know that, do you think?
I don't know, when we finish our discussion. Maybe it maybe it's it's at our next meeting.
Two months, a year, what do you think?
I think. I think, um.
Shall we, shouldn't go by the bylaw, just whatever you come up with in the next meeting?
No, our job is to interpret the bylaw.
Okay, can you let us know, and then we can get the plan going?
I'll let you know as soon as you, uh, let us have our discussion, you, you continue to interrupt, so it's a little difficult.
It's, you know, I think, I, I've been. Um, impressed with the creativity on the seating costs, and I think that the staggering of opening and closing times.
Right.
You know, it seems to me that it's within our discretion to. You know, say, count the seats in the restaurant when it's open. Um, count the seats in the coffee shop when it's open.
Right.
And not count them when they aren't, if we have a condition that they have to not overlap.
And they.
Which makes, you know, which, which, in, as a practical matter. Is a, a useful thing to do, because they're not going to require parking when they're closed. To accomplish the, the purpose of the parking bylaw, that is a creative way to do it. Um, I'm not, I think that the spaces, the open spaces, I'm. I think the bylaw probably does require some parking for, um, I don't know if it's eighty, eighty square feet. You know, one space for eighty square feet, which is probably the most likely one, but I don't, I don't understand, I don't believe. That there's any need for parking for an open walkway that people are just walking through, it's, you know, if they're going to someplace. Where there's a seat, that there's, parking has already been accounted for, but there are other places where people may park. And go to exclusively, like the, you know, the. Balcony or whatever it's called, and I think that's the kind of thing that we need to be able to have. A discussion amongst the members of the board, and we can't tell you right now what the end product of that discussion is going to be, because we haven't had it.
No, it's fine, if you could just tell us, though, at some point, then we can.
Of course, we're going to tell you at some point, but what, what you want is you want us to consider the plan, and either. Issue a special permit or tell you why we can't, and we have to have that discussion before we can do that, we can't do that. I know you're anxious to have an answer, but we can't give you an answer until we've talked about it.
I, I, I got all that, that's fine, I would just like to get that answer, so we're not wasting time and money. Without really knowing what you want, so if you could tell us what you want, how you want us to figure that. We'll go from there, and then, one, one thing I want to add, the coffee shop did say they would agree to. Certain hours that wouldn't overlap the restaurant, so they'll put that in their lease or whatever and agree to that, and that would be a binding agreement.
So it'd be something that we would condition a special permit on anyway, so it would be.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, I mean, however it is, yeah, I guess it would be in the special conditions or whatever. But we're really just wasting time here unless, till we find out how you want us to figure it, and then if, and you can tell us that, we can. Re-figure it and go from there, or reconfigure, or cut the size or whatever.
I hope you understand, it's our, it's our job to interpret the bylaw, and if the bylaw was crystal clear, we wouldn't need this discussion, but it's not. So we do need it.
No, I understand that, but I'd like, we've already wasted three months, four months, without knowing what we're doing, so. Sooner you can tell us that, the better, please.
I understand your concern.
And that's why I, when I opened this discussion, I said I didn't think it was fair to the applicant. To not have a, a consensus in terms of what measure or measurements, plural, we would be applying. Doesn't make sense for you just to regurgitate data if, if we were to say it's invalid or incomplete, so we have to have a come-to-agreement. As a board.
Yeah, but I say, I think it was Michael or someone was saying, we're sort of all suffering with this poorly worded pub, bylaw, and, you know. I, what I would request is that what has been submitted, and that you presumably all now have. Is to review that, and in, in, in its detail of how it all syncs together, uh, of presenting a best-case scenario. And we're quite close, in my opinion, um, and that, then when we meet next to talk about, well, now I see what you guys have done, and. If you want to interpret the bylaw in which, the way that, that supports that and enables this to go forward the way we're proposing. Then we're very close. If you feel like now, I don't really think that's right, and what we have there now is. Somehow better, or whatever, or if there's other adjustments you need to know, and I think that's Tom's, our frustration is, we don't really know what the rules are either. What we did is we, we created a project that is so much better in so many ways, and scaled down and has. Safer and has less parking demands and has less occupancies, that's our whole objective with the project. So when we get feedback from you guys, and you've been able to read all the documents, you're saying, oh, well, here's, here's the last few problems, or here's a little tweak you got to work on. That's where we want to be at, and I think we all do, so.
It's an important project for the town, everybody wants to make it work.
Oh, yeah.
But we have to make it work the right way.
Oh, I completely agree, so we think we've made it, it, it's a whole lot better, or, you know. Working better than it is now, for sure, I mean, right now, you've got a situation where the building is a four-hundred-and-forty-two-person capacity. And, you know, forty parking spaces, I mean, go figure. And you just turn the lights on, start running it if you want tomorrow, as a function hall, it's bizarre, but. We're, we're looking forward to something that's more compatible to waterfront facilities of public accommodation. Scale-down operations that are sustainable, sustainable businesses, better opportunities for the neighborhood, safer parking lots. Um, you know, a- all of that, and. What we heard as our work product from the last meeting, we went and did, and we're very happy with the outcome. Still some tweaking to be done, but, um, that's why we're here as a team, and that's why I was sort of impassioned initially, like. Decide, we got to get behind this, you know, or, and I presume everyone will, there's a lot of support for it, I think, as you know. Um, but. We, uh, we'll wait, wait to hear from you about, uh, in your review of what's been submitted.
Wow, what do you, what do you, where do you want to go from here, I think. We kind of need to decide what standards are that are going to be applied, so we can.
Absolutely, it's the only fair thing for everybody, I mean, we're just going to be going in circles otherwise.
So I did notice another little glitch. That may be helpful to the applicant, like, we're, you know, one of the things that we're looking at is the lobster pound. Um, and looking at the space requirements that are required under H for a warehouse. But the only way we can do that is if it's considered to be a mixed use. Because under mixed uses, you consider the parking spaces separately for each use, if it's not a mixed use. We go back to this net floor area, and probably the eighty square feet, a- and it seems to me that. This is more, because there are different. Establishments here, it's not one restaurant, it's a number of different establishments, and it seems. It feels more to me like a mixed-use type of project, from a parking standpoint, for the needs for parking, than it does. You know, um, just one large restaurant with a lot of open floor, or, you know, and other open floor space. Um, and I, that also kind of helps with our thinking, as a restaurant, as part of a mixed-use development. It kind of harmonizes everything into subsection E, which, since it's been applied in the past for restaurants. Since courts have looked at it, I'm most comfortable with using that.
Could I ask, uh, the, mix, say it's mixed use with square footage, does that. Square footage, is that just the public area, or that would include a kitchen, bathroom, or everything, or just the public area?
Under E, you're saying?
It's the, I mean, under E, restaurants that are part of a mixed-use development is based on seating. And the restaurant includes the kitchen and everything else, as part of the restaurant.
So I was saying, if you use the square footage method.
Yeah, you wouldn't use the square footage method for that part, but you've got other uses in the, in the property, and. If you're going to calculate the pa- parking spaces for those other uses, you have, you do it one of two ways. You do it by looking at the use and what the bylaw says for that particular use. Or you just consider it to be open floor space, and you calculate one space for every, every eighty.
That's what I'm trying to get at, the open s- uh, floor space. Lobster shop had a ten-foot, ten-by-ten public area, and, you know, say nine hundred feet in the back. What counts, the ten-by-ten or the whole thousand?
What's the public area, uh, I don't understand.
Where the people come in to pick up a lobster.
They're not, they're not going to do that, uh, here, there, there's no food served, fresh or prepared.
Well, I assume people, uh. No, there's no food, but if they have a, or. Where the lobstermen come in and drop off lobsters, there's a.
That's one thing, but there's no, I mean, that's, there's no food service.
No, it's no food service, well, maybe, just forget the lobster, but say, um.
Alright, I mean, that would be one of our conditions, that, that no, no lobster, no retail sales.
Yeah, but.
Thought that was, I thought there was some metric around, it was le- uh, less than five or ten percent of the business, it would be considered, I don't know if I'm.
That's not in our bylaw.
And I, but I don't see that it needs to be limited without retail sales, I mean, if it's, well, I, well, wait a minute, going back to. I guess that would be a retail business, and that would use one space for each eight hundred.
Say it's a retail store that has, say, nine hundred feet in the back.
Then you need nine spaces.
And, and a hundred square feet that the public can get into, which, which counts, the whole thousand feet or just a hundred? Just a hypothetical question, or.
One space for each hundred square feet of net floor area, for offices, stores, and other business establishments.
Yeah, and then the warehousing section would be one space for every five hundred square feet.
Right.
Mister Chairman, we, we did want to have a conversation regarding the lobster pound, because we believe that a de minimis amount of. Retail to the public doesn't disqualify the, that use as warehouse distribution. Um, and so we were hoping to be able to present to that argument, so that the parking. Again, for the majority, the vast majority of the use is appropriately warehouse distribution, but that would not preclude. Small-scale sale of lobsters to, uh, to the public, again, as opposed to a. Operation where you're serving prepared foods.
I would, I would default to J, where it says mixed uses, you do it separately, you've got two different uses, but we're not going to talk about that tonight. We haven't had, had a chance to look at the material, and we haven't agreed what it is, you know, what, what's measured to you as a measures. So the first job is what, what I started off, and, and it doesn't sound honestly like the board is prepared tonight to. Uh, you know, move in lockstep, and I, and I think the board has to reach consensus, not, not, uh.
I agree, it's fine, just, that's would be, I don't, I'm not asking for it for tonight, but at some point, if you could tell us what, how you want.
We'll, we'll all benefit, we all want that.
And then we can go from there, how we figure the building.
Yeah.
What we do with the building, if we cut it in half, or we do it as a chone, or whatever, but we just need some way to figure it.
Adam, if, if you can find something in the bylaw or case law that speaks about de minimis. Mixed uses, that's fine, um, I, I don't, I know there's nothing in the bylaw, our own bylaw, but there may be something elsewhere.
Adam, is what you're talking about with the current lobster pound does?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they're.
I, I understand the vast majority of the business is wholesale, but there's a small percentage of retail customers, which we'd like to try and accommodate. But that would change the nature of the business to retail, if you had, and again, I'm making up a number, please don't quote me. If it's five percent of retail sales of lobster, um, does that convert a warehouse distribution business into a retail business? That suggests not.
I don't know, but.
I, I don't either, but if I, if I bought your argument, you know, you'd still have to provide parking for, uh, retail customers. You, you, you can't have it both ways, you, you can't say, I've got a, a small retail business, but, but I, but you can't kind of. Count any parking needs those patrons may have, it doesn't work that way. You wouldn't make, make the whole warehousing operation meet.
And, and, and like, if that were, if that were a suggestion, then, as, as a solution to achieving our, our objectives. I mean, I think we all want to see the lobster pound there, and the lobstermen love the idea, then maybe we say, okay, what is that little square footage that is the spot? That is the sort of retail, is it ten by ten square feet? And we have two extra parking spaces already, Woody, so maybe we, you know, we've got, we've got the ability to, to solve that. Um, just in looking at the way the lobster pound operates now, they do.
Yeah, well, we're, we're getting off on, I mean.
No, but I'm saying is that, again, things like this, we can solve, if we want to solve them. Um, we, we did, thought it was pretty clear in the last meeting, was do seat count. And go where that leads, and then still address the lobster pound separately, and, and we, we've done that. So we, I, I think we've gotten a lot closer now, if, if that changes, that, that's a big shift. But the seat count makes the most sense, I mean, one to three in my mind makes a lot of sense, anyhow, if you go to a restaurant. You typically go either with one other person, or with the four people in your car, and the family, so. One to three makes sense to me, but, um, and it is in the bylaw, and Old Salt House has established that, so. That enables this very nicely, with our concept, and the hours of operation that.
Yeah, we've got all that, I mean, that, that's not the, you know, uh, I don't think that's the essential point here. The, the essential point is, we've got to move beyond this roadblock. And decide, is it one method, or some combination of methods, and, and how to apply, so then you guys can. I, either, you know, submit plans or modify them a- as you see fit, but. You're, you're flying blind, and, and so are we, uh, really, so I think.
Yeah, so that's the most important thing right now, get clear what you want.
I think also with the lobster pound, i- is similar to a lot of these other things, where it could be solved by staggered hour issues.
Yep, absolutely, and they are, in fact, that's also part of the submission, we have hours of operation for all the businesses, and they stagger beautifully. And that's one of the great things about this, the parts of the day, and how this can become part of the community, versus what it is now. This dark blob, then you turn it on, and it's this three-hundred-and-fifty-person event that overwhelms the, the community. This does dayparts, morning, very early, midday, afternoon, evening. And it serves all the different population because of the dayparts, I, I think, um, we would just request you, you know, you look what we have.
Alright, and, and I, I submitted a, a spreadsheet, and I assumed that it was, uh, that some of it was, was more was.
You responded to all of that, I believe, we responded to all of that, and your question.
So I haven't had. Looking at it.
Yeah, and the peak demand, um, and the site plan, which we picked, we picked up two more spaces, which was really kind of nice. What, what the thirty-five.
That's, that's all well and good, but we have to, uh, come to agreement as a board, Joel.
Mister, yeah, Mister Sullivan, I'm speaking, thank you, uh, Mister Chairman, uh, you had suggested that the board have a. Discussion, a general discussion about the zoning bylaw, I thought it was a good idea, I think we've had that discussion. I think that, uh, we've, uh, the board was not able, I guess we've all, uh, come to cross purposes here to some extent. I have a suggestion, and that is, for the continued discussion of this project. That it begin not with an abstract conversation about which zoning bylaw applies. But that it begin with the applicants presenting the chart, and I guess I'm, I'm looking at it, it was, it stated, uh. May second revised May thirty-first, and it breaks down the pieces, and, and whatever, uh, however they want to present it, but basically. Presenting the project point by point, uh. Uh, element by element, I guess, what I'm trying to say, whether it's the restaurant, whether it's the lobster pound, whether it's the cafe and so forth, and. Explaining how many parking spaces are, and it's laid out in the chart, but walking. The board through it, and explaining what portions of the bylaw they're looking at, to arrive at those numbers. And I think that it will help the members of the board. To, uh, look at the bylaw from that practical perspective, if you will, and so essentially, uh, it sounds like you have the material. Um, and giving everybody an opportunity to study it, and then have the applicants walk the board through it, what do you think of that?
Any part, we were prepared.
Sorry, Adam, what were you saying?
I'm sorry, we were prepared to do that this evening, so Gabriel and Darren were prepared to take you through the calculation. Uh, with reference to the zoning requirements that we relied upon.
Right. Yeah, I, I, I think that's spot on, Joel, and that's, that's a little bit of the disappointment, but with the timing of when you got the documents, and some people didn't. I guess, get them on time, or didn't know what you're asking, you know, David was referring to the architectural plan, not site plan. Exactly, Joel, that was our goal today, was in fact, and when we met with John. Exactly, Joel, that was our goal today was in fact, and when we met with John on Friday, we're gonna keep this simple. We're gonna look at the site plan, we were gonna start with the site plan and say, here's how we laid this out. Here's how we calculated the table, here's how we got the seat count, here's how we got the parking. What do you think? And here's how we got here. And then if you wanna see a backup of a seating plan, we had a seating plan, so, I mean, we're gonna have to.
We can do that at, at the next.
Right, so you're gonna have to review what we have and we will do, we will just step up and do a presentation of how we interpret. And how we did our count and how we have laid it out. And then there can be a discussion of if, what the hole, what are holes in that or whether it's applicable. Yeah, I, I agree with you entirely.
Mister, Mister Chairman, given the board's schedule and upcoming vacations. And to afford the board additional time to review the materials, would you consider scheduling a special meeting? Sometime prior to July twelfth, so we can go through that exercise since we're prepared to do so. You simply need more time to review the materials that we've submitted.
Now, that may be very reasonable, we have a kind of a, well, sitting here tonight, I don't know what's gonna be filed. Tomorrow, but we've, uh, dispensed with virtually everything except, uh, except your situation, so. We're either on Ju- July, uh, whenever it is, seventh and twelfth. July twelfth is going to be largely forty-six border street, or we could have a separate meeting. Uh, and, and leave the twelfth, uh, as follow-up. And any new submissions, there always will be a new submission here and there, but, uh. We're, we're looking at a pretty much of a blank slate except for your situation, how do you think, David, being vice chair?
Um, it, it seems to me this, that July twelfth is gonna be pretty much exclusively forty-six border anyway. I mean, we have the decision that we're gonna have to review for, um, Hobart Lane, or no, um.
No.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, we have to assign that decision, yeah.
Right, so, and that's gonna take, what, five minutes and.
Yeah.
With the rest of the evening can be forty-six border unless we get a new application. Um.
And then so it has to follow a continued hearing, so.
Right, I, I would like to see that sta- the hours that are proposed for each of the facilities in the.
We have that.
Is that in the stuff?
Went out Friday.
Alright.
But I do like the suggestion, I'm not sure if this, what is your process? But Adam's suggestion, because, you know, July twelfth is five weeks away. And that's a long time for, for everybody, for us for sure too. And that then bumps into August and the August discussion you had earlier, of course, is following on that. Could it be that we could have a meeting with you and present the plans as Joel was suggesting, a very. You know, this is a math puzzle, very technical discussion. In relation to our view of the flawed bylaw and how we got to where we got. If we could do that in a couple of weeks, or we could do it next week, or whenever you can meet again, then the twelfth could be very meaningful. I'm concerned that the twelfth is five weeks away and then. You know, we, we do all that and then it's kept pushed and then there's August and. And there's vacation, so is there a, an ability to have a working meeting? Um, where we present to you.
Couple of weeks.
Soon. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, let's see, we're.
We're, we're, we're ready now, you know, so.
I understand, but. The board may not be, how does the board feel about having something in two weeks, special session? Conflicts, first of all, I wanna, I mean, anybody, everybody on the board has to be here.
Lee.
I, I, I'm, I'm out the next two weeks, week of the thirteenth and the twentieth.
You're out, okay. Lee.
Um, the, um, I, I anticipate, uh, being available. Well, I'm expecting my first grandchild.
Oh, 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 okay.
In the next two weeks, so I, you know, if I.
You want a little flexibility there?
I want a little flexibility, so.
Alright. I want, I'd like Mike, I mean, I'd like us all to be there because we, we can't find ourselves. In a situation where then somebody gets sick and all of a sudden we're, we're, you know, below. Below a quorum.
Yeah, I mean, that, I have, I have availability in the next, uh.
Mike, you're gone.
But for the next two weeks, but then I have. As of right now, the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth and thirtieth, I have. Public hearings that will probably be at night, that I wouldn't be available.
Mike, let me, let me pick on you, what, when are you available?
Uh, well, um, obviously, um, flying out Friday night, so tomorrow and Thursday, Thursday. Uh, also, uh, back, back in, uh, the twenty-seventh, so I could do that week.
No, I can certainly do the week of the twenty-seventh. Um, Lee, of course, you may have a grandchild, but.
Yes.
Hey, what about you?
The week, the, the twenty-eighth, if he gets back the twenty-seventh, the twenty-eighth should be fine, I'm just.
Yeah, I'm assuming we'll still be zooming at that point, right?
Yeah, Cassandra, you think so?
Yes.
Alright, I'll be out of town, but I can certainly do a zoom.
Okay, Mike, I mean, uh, Mike, okay, I know about you, Matt, you're gone though, the three days?
Also, yeah, right now I have twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty blocked out, but it's a, um. It's a, it's like an energy, uh, public hearing.
The twenty-eighth is a Tuesday, so you block that out, Mike, Mike, when are you back specifically?
Uh, I'm, I'm flying back, uh, Friday, the twenty-fourth.
We could meet on a Monday?
Uh, yeah, twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh. Anybody have a known conflict with the twenty-seventh, Dave?
I don't, no, I'm fine.
I'm okay. I, I know it isn't next week like you'd like, but we have to have, uh, maintain. Uh, a, a, a quorum and, and, uh, can't, uh. Can't risk that, so.
Oh, no, and I completely, I completely get that, Woody, and I totally respect that and that's great, I think what, I think the goal is. Having another meeting before the twelfth.
Yeah, okay, well, the twenty-seven.
Bloodshot deal. Be much more productive for everybody and then. You know, getting ahead of myself a little bit here, if, if we have this session on the twenty-seventh and we really, you get to really see. All of that and, and we've come up with, and maybe you've got some thoughts on how you view the bylaw. That then enables another, you know, fifteen days prior to the, to the twelfth meeting. Can, can any kind of motion be prepared or, and any kind of anticipation of the twelfth? Beware, we're really getting to, in a final position. With something we collectively as a team decide, this is how we're gonna package this. So maybe at the twenty-seventh, we say, this is the massaging that is to happen and then you could write that into your order and if it works for us, then we can try to. You know, get there on the twelfth. I'm, I'm a eternally hopeful guy, you see.
And it depends on what happens on the twenty-seventh.
Oh, yeah, and, and you know, one thing I'm going to be looking at, and we won't even, I, I don't wanna sort of get into sections. A, B, C, D, E, F, G, but, um, I'm gonna be looking at. Areas in this proposal, in this complex, that are gonna be generating traffic. On its own. And is, is that accounted for in terms of parking spaces? Or not, but if it's generating traffic, likely to generate traffic, I'd like to see how you're gonna spell. Or account for that, 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 that kind of use. We can figure out what section of the bylaw might apply and so on and so forth down the road.
Okay, we can look at that, yep, we will talk about.
Okay, so that, I'm just telling you, it, it's.
Yeah, I know, that's fine.
You know, they're.
And I, I mean, I, again, we, we've all worked so hard on this between Holy Martinez and Darren and. Um, Grady Consulting and, and Adam and, and, you know, working through this confusing bylaw. To where I think we're really, really close, I mean, it's such an improvement, as I, I'm sort of saying the same thing over and over again. And then we team up, we say, well, what are the, what are the missing pieces, what do we, what have we not accounted for, what, what is, where are we good? And we're gonna be really, I think you're gonna be pleased when you read the documents.
Okay.
How close we are, and then, you know, obviously, there's always some further massaging, we just, you know, we'll get there. But we'd love to be in a position of some group.
Well, we've gotta be able to apply the bylaw. Clearly and as accurately as, as we can, our job, as you know, is not to. Design or, uh, a project or to. Deviate or vary the bylaw, we really can't, cannot do that.
Right, and what we've been doing is we've been, again, working with John on their, you know, and. Our interpretation of the flawed bylaw and looking at that along with every other allocation we thought we should cover. We thought, we, we think we're there. So we need to convince you of that.
Alright, well, I'm looking forward to seeing the material you sent and including some of the spaces that were really left un- untouched or unaddressed.
Yep, yep, you got it. So the twenty-seventh, we'll have a special session to zoom in together. And if that, um, to, to, does this, Cassandra, do you, uh, you send that back out as a Zoom invite for us? And is it a public meeting or is it, I don't know, however you want.
It'll be public.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes, so it'll be a public meeting, um, with a new agenda, with a new link, so I'll send that out to all of you. At the very least, I'll send it to Adam because I don't think I have everybody's.
But. Because Tracy, Tracy Bird gets it to us, yep.
Yep.
We don't have to republish this, right?
It does not need to go back out into the newspaper, no, the agenda will be posted, but it doesn't have to have the public hearing in the newspaper.
Okay, good.
I, I'd also add that if there are any questions at all. I mean, we're right here, we're, we're, you know, we're around and we have email and if anyone, I mean, Woody said a bunch of very helpful questions. If there are any questions at all over the next, you know, couple of weeks where people are looking at this. Um, send them along and we'll, we'll deal, dig, dig into them.
Or if you have a different way to figure it, then.
Yeah, just. So that we can be as productive as possible at, at, in our meetings with your time as well.
Okay, the board agreed?
Yeah, just if you have any documents coming, make sure they're here by the twentieth.
Yeah.
The ones you have are the, are the, are the latest and greatest and I think they're, they speak for themselves, but. You know, absolutely, David, if there's anything you're missing or, you know, you're, don't have a document, let us know, we'll, we'll drop it off, we'll. Email it to you, whatever you want.
Okay.
Alright, thanks, Woody.
Should we move the ball forward, alright, that sounds good to me.
Thank you.
So seven o'clock on the, uh, twenty-seventh.
Yes.
Okay, well, with that, I'd, uh, make them, is there any other, uh, business that we have, zoning business? Think. Who's, who's, who's gonna volunteer?
Woody, Hobart, what?
Somebody's got their hand up in the audience.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry, I, I, hmm. Yeah, I did not mean to cut off anybody patiently waiting out there, I apologize.
There is someone who would like to address the board, if you'd entertain that.
Sure, sure.
Okay, I'll pull them up.
Uh, Mister Chairman.
Yeah.
Uh, George.
What did you do to him? You're, you're muted, George, but is, is that you, Cassandra, can you free him up?
No, I'm good. So George McGoldrick, one oh seven Border Street Cohasset. Um, I obviously wear a number of different hats, uh, I'm a resident, I'm a. I live a couple hundred yards from the Cohasset Wharf project. Uh, I'm a partner in the Cohasset and the Salt House. Uh, I've been in front of the board for years on a number of other projects. And I just want to kind of emphasize what myself. And my wife Mary and my neighbors feel about this project. And that is that it is a tremendous benefit to the neighborhood. So I'm speaking more as a neighbor than anything else. And on the butter, I mean, one of the reasons we moved down to the, to the river, I've been in Cohasset for thirty years. One of the reasons we moved down to the harbor was to have access to these type of facilities. And I can tell you that almost four years ago, when Ted Lubitz and I and our, the two Marconi brothers took over. Uh, Gerd's debacle was to help save what everyone believes Cohasset is about. Which is a beautiful young, is, community, small wharf community with a harbor and access to great things. So we took it over and we had all these problems, one of the problems was the Atlantica restaurant, Atlantica was too big. For a restaurant and too small for a function, it was, it was a dinosaur and we struggled with it and. The only reason it worked on Peter Roy was because he didn't have a mortgage or any, or didn't put any capital into it. So Tom Sullivan came in and basically what we feel saved the day. And what he's proposing is, again, this is, I've got no financial interest in Cohasset Wharf. Uh, I think, but as a neighbor and a butter, I think what he's proposing is tremendous for the community. It's gonna bring people to the waterfront, it's gonna open it up, it's gonna make it great, it's gonna combine with what we're doing over at the. At the hotel with the condos in the park. So I understand the board's problem with the language in the bylaws. But I really hope the board believes that this is a great project for the town. Because myself and all my neighbors and everybody that lives down here thinks it's a unbelievable, great asset to the town. And we think what Tom is doing is a real benefit to town. Peter Roy did a lot of things for the town, but he painted everything gray and didn't put any money into it, Tom is putting money. And sweat and equity into it, and it's gonna be a phenomenal project. So I hope we can work together to get around the language in the bylaws. And understand that what they're proposing is really twenty-five percent of the impact that the Atlantica had. Atlantica had, and I, I've been down here for thirty years, Atlantica had weddings and restaurants going at, at the same time. With a tiny parking lot and it worked. People didn't really complain about the parking, it wasn't a problem, it worked. These guys are proposing twenty-five percent of what Atlantica weddings and restaurant had. And I believe it's gonna work really, really well, so I understand your issues about making work under the bylaws. But I also believe that there's an upgrade area that you guys can make this work, so I trust in both ZBA and Sullivan's people to make. Work is all the neighbors really wanted, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else, Cassandra, out there that's been patient? Anybody else?
I believe so.
Okay, well, I think we've. Used up our allotted, uh, two hours. Or whatever, um, so I'd make a motion to. Uh, adjourn this hearing until, uh, Ju- uh, June twenty-seventh, Monday at seven o'clock.
Continue the hearing.
Continue the hearing.
Second.
Sorry, Woody Chirikai.
Dave McMorrissey.
Lead Dark Star.
Michael Dickey, I.
Matt Watkins.
Okay.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Forward to talk on the twenty-seventh.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Woody, good night.
Alright, we will see you all in a few weeks.
Not at all.
Where, uh, where, Woody?
Where, where did Woody go?
Did we adjourn the meeting?
No, we didn't, we just.
No?
Oh.
And we don't have anything else on the agenda, right?
Just to let him back in.
I move, we adjourn.
Everybody left.
Second the most.
Uh, Dave McMorrissey.
Matt Watkins.
Lead Dark.
Okay, well, uh, good night then, folks.
I guess.
All set, Cassandra?
Yep, I guess so, all set, good night.
Good night.